As always, we have a full agenda which will include three public hearings. The first will be a small modification of a site plan review from on three hundred Elliott Street. That's the Bank of America near Shaw's. And then we will go on to discuss one hundred Chestnut Street and five oh one Pond Street. The other two, if you have an agenda in front of you, the other two public hearings, actually one public hearing and one. One other task we had tonight is our continue this evening, so those would be our major, our major topics. Before we get started with that, though, Kate, do you have anything for the Clerk's Report this week?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do. We have received three public comments since the nine twenty-two Planning Board meeting. None of those recent comments were on planning or items on the agenda this evening. One of the three received was multiple emails that were about the same subject that was addressed by the Town Board, and that is report.
Right, great, thank you. Next on the agenda, doesn't necessarily fall under Clerk's Report, but is in there. We have Town Manager Michael Herbert with us the evening, with, with us this evening. And he wanted to talk about a proposal for a town meeting article. So that would be an, obviously something of time sensitive, so he's here this, this evening. Michael, without further ado, I will hand it over to you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and many thanks to you and the Planning Board for squeezing me in on this agenda. It's very much appreciated. Kevin, congratulations on the baby. And Allison, I, I hate to see you go, but I wish you well in your future endeavors. But you've been a fixture since I've been in, in Ashland, so always behind the camera. So, yes, I wanted to come before you tonight and discuss a potential warrant article for the November sixteenth Annual Town Meeting. What, after discussion with the Select Board last night, what I'd like to propose is that we add a warrant article that establishes a moratorium on multifamily dwelling units here in Ashland. And the reason, you know, the reason behind that is a multifold. So I should point out since two thousand and ten. Well, in, in the two thousand and ten census, Ashland had six thousand five hundred and eighty-one housing units. In two thousand and twenty, based on the census numbers then, that grew to seven thousand four hundred and ninety-five units. Now, I know over five hundred of those were related to or because of multifamily developments. Specifically for almost four hundred units at the Sears Apartment Complex, sixty units at Ashland Woods, which is on the Hopkinton line, and that was a forty B project. And then an additional forty B project at Robert Hillway told sixty-four units. Six twenty, since two thousand and twenty, I know that the zoning board has approved a comprehensive permit for another one hundred and eighty units in a multifamily type setting. And I believe currently before the Planning Board right now, you have four hundred and ninety-four multifamily units pending before you. And that includes five oh one Pond Street, Hundred Chestnut Street, and also ten to fifty Main Street, ten to sixty Main Street. So I think if you just look at the numbers, we have seen pretty rapid growth over, over a short period. I did look at the census numbers and aside from Hopkinton, we had the fastest rate of housing unit growth in Metro West. And I would be being very generous with Metro West. So, you know, I think, you know, when we have this type of growth, it's hard to really anticipate what the impacts are going to be. Because the impacts don't just show up at the, at the beginning of, of, you know, occupancy. They take some time and it, it lasts. So, you know, we haven't necessarily had the opportunity to see what kind of impact this is going to have on municipal resources, our infrastructure, and our, our schools. So I think, you know, more importantly, you know, in, in addition to the growth that we know about right now, there, there has been discussions, I should say, or at least rumors about several multifamily developments that would total five hundred units coming onboard. And obviously, there's no permit application or building permits issued for those yet. But that is just, again, you, we could just chalk that up to rumor. But anyway, just get to, get to the specifics of the moratorium. The moratorium would be for a little over two years. It would go to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. It would apply to multifamily developments in mixed-use developments which have multifamily dwellings as part of it. And I should point out that if there's an application that's already been submitted and currently before the Planning Board, those would be exempt from this moratorium, but any application afterwards would, would, the building moratorium would apply. And I believe that they can still go through the Planning Board process, but they just wouldn't be able to build this. And, or build the units. I should also point out that if a developer would like to do a forty B project which circumvents our zoning and bylaws, it would, they would be able to submit a comprehensive permit application for that. What I'd like the Planning Board, or what I'm asking for the Planning Board, is to ask, ask for your support in, in general. And then since this is a zoning article, the Planning Board would need to have a planning, a, a public hearing. And then also provide a recommendation to town meeting on this. So I think I've talked enough initially, so I'm here to entertain any questions that you may have.
Yeah, why don't we open it up to any questions from the board?
I have a question on, so you said the forty B can be submitted even with the moratorium. Is that blanketly, or if we are not in safe harbor?
Good question, Kate. If we are in safe harbor, we would not be subjected to forty B applications or forty B developments.
Okay, and then we, I know we are either in it or just out of it and potentially getting back in it. Do we have, I guess I would want to see sort of that data. I don't expect you have to have that tonight, but it's part of the hearing or the process.
In terms of the amount of growth?
Um, well, the projected, so with those units that are in front of the Planning Board and projected, I think to see those numbers of where we would get to on the percentage of subsized housing and what it would take to get to the ten or more percent as well, I think that should be part of this discussion and transparent about that. It's helpful for people to understand.
Yeah, Peter, I know Peter has those numbers, so he could probably distribute them out fairly quickly, isn't that right, Peter?
Yeah, so, excuse me, I am unmuted, I'm sorry. Town planning, how's everyone doing tonight? Uh, yeah, I, you know, I think that I do have most of those numbers put together. I think they have to be obviously refined and, and then obviously double-checked, but I should have that. I, I do have all that information.
Any other questions for Michael?
There, Michael, is there a particular reason that we are required to have on the proposal for town meeting? In other words, do we need to, in order for these moratoriums to work, are we, what is the town's reason for it? How will this be framed as far as kind of what the reason is so that we can understand the timeframe of two years and so forth?
Well, I'll start with your second question first. You know, a, a two-year moratorium has been founded and upheld in, in case law. Towns cannot put, you know, unlimited, a, a moratorium for an, for an unlimited piece, a period of time. They can't pass those. And then also, you know, ideally, what you're supposed to do is use the time period where the moratorium is happening to use that to help plan and gauge what kind of infrastructure, both, you know, community-wise and, and personnel-wise that you need to maintain or manage that growth. And so I think part of the reason that this makes sense to do this right now is that we're talking about a comprehensive plan. And that period of comprehensive planning would run in line with that moratorium. So that's the reason it would be two years. To go to your first question, you know, why are we proposing this or why did I propose this? Is just the, the amount of growth that we've seen in the last twelve years. Again, there's almost a thousand units of growth between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty. And then there have also been a hundred and eighty multifamily units since two thousand and twenty that have been permitted. And like I said, you've got four hundred and ninety-four units before the Planning Board right now. Now, I should be very, very clear that the moratorium does not apply to those. It, it can't apply to those legally. But anything in, that's almost five hundred or fifteen hundred units, I should say, right there. So I think before we entertain or, which we have to entertain, any more additional multifamily units, we should take a pause and determine what it is that, you know, the impacts are from the current, current units that are online and in the pipeline.
Is that, is the, one of the impacts, is that related to the sewer moratorium, the sewer usage issue?
Yes, so infrastructure would certainly encompass roads and water and, like you said, sewer.
And, you know, the, the reason I bring that up is I, I just want to be very clear. So that, you know, I, I certainly would, would support this request. And I just want to make sure that we, as a town, are very clear as to what the reasons are other than, hey, there's just too many, right? I think there has to be some kind of understanding of why too many is a concern.
Actually, if, if I can add to, to that, Anna, because I, I was thinking kind of along the same lines. And, and I also like what Kate was stuck with. But, Michael, there, there's, there's a study relative to the sewer moratorium that is going to take place during the time of the moratorium, which is logical, right? Put a moratorium, you study, you get a results, and then you can act. Are there any planned studies other than the comprehensive plan? Because the comprehensive plan, yeah, ideally would address this, but it might not be on time for those two years. Are there additional studies that the town would commission to study whatever the, 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 the issues are? Or are we relying only on the comprehensive plan and the likelihood that it would address that?
The comprehensive plan would certainly be the major one, right? I think, you know, you mentioned the sewer, the sewer issue and, and a study related to that, that would certainly play a role. The only study that I'm currently, that I'm aware of right now that we would potentially be undertaking along the same time is something related to diversity and equity and inclusion, which I'm hoping we can wrap that into the comprehensive plan as we have those discussions. But those are the only ones that I'm aware of right now.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm just saying that because it, it seems like it, it would be a good backup. Going back to what Anna was saying, saying, okay, yeah, during this time, we expect at the end of, say, one and a half years to have initial findings and start making decisions accordingly. But, but, so, so beyond that, is that, so this applies to multifamily as defined as what, four or more?
A multifamily dwelling is defined as three or more units on a single lot.
So a person that has a large property that by law, by, by, by right can develop, let's say, a triple decked off, just, just to put up, paint a picture, would not be able to do it under this moratorium?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if I could, just to clarify, the applications would still be accepted. It would still come to the Planning Board, we would still go through the entire process. Would we then need to make a decision as a board? Like, let's say an application comes to us after the moratorium is effective, you know, in December, and we get an application in January. We would still hear it if we wrap up next year. Do we then make a decision or do we wait until the moratorium ends? How does that work?
Well, if you wrap it up, you're, you're making a decision on whether, whether to issue that permit or not. And then that developer would need to wait until the moratorium ended before they built, they pulled the building permit.
Got it, so, so it has really no impact on our, we can't say, oh, we can't make a decision until this is done. We actually have to make the decision in the regular process, it's just the building itself can't begin.
Correct, and legally, you're exactly right. Practically, what we found in other communities is that developers do not necessarily want to go through the process, the planning board process, and then wait for a period of time. They will typically wait, you know, if they do plan on submitting an application till it's closer to the time that the moratorium ends. I think Framingham, actually, and, and I need to double-check this, which recently enacted a two-year moratorium. I don't believe they had any applications come before the Planning Board during that two-year period.
Is there a way legally to say no to the applications as well, or is that not allowed as part of a moratorium?
I've been advised by legal counsel that we can't keep them from applying.
That's helpful, thank you.
Um, I have, it's sort of a version of follow-up of Marcelo's comments, but I'm thinking that, like, at the public presentation for a hearing, we would want to maybe have some more meat of the things we would be looking at. And I think it kind of wraps up the comments, like, if we, so let's say we do get applications, we're, we're almost like, the moratorium's nice because we're studying stuff, but then we might be forced to make a decision without that information. So at least if it's spelled out, the things that we looked at, I think that would be really helpful as a guidebook. And it might also kind of go along if a developer was going to apply their, their weight. They see that there is a reason to wait because there really are things being looked at.
I agree with that.
So like a checklist, Kate, of things that, other issues besides sewer that the town may be wanting to take a closer look at, which might be part of the comprehensive plan as well. But which ones would we be pulling, would the town be kind of pulling out as especially important for this moratorium?
Yes.
Is that, assume that's possible, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments for the, from the board?
I mean, I, I have no additional questions, just I, I do, I do support this. If, you know, certainly, I'm assuming the Select Board voted to support this, Michael? I haven't had a chance to watch yesterday's meeting.
They didn't.
And, you know, I, I certainly would support it. I don't know if we need to take a vote today or how that works.
I think we should take, because it is going to require the Planning Board to either fit this public hearing into another upcoming, our next meeting, or to hold maybe a, a special shorter meeting just on this topic. So since that obviously is part of the Planning Board's time, oh, Peter?
I just want to note that, uh, working on, you know, looking at timelines and stuff. If, if this is a, this would require a Planning Board public hearing. Uh, that public hearing has to be advertised, just like any other public hearing. So if that was the case, and we do have, and, and we, and we, and we do not schedule a special Planning Board meeting for this, the public hearing would take place on November tenth. And that is just due to the advertising timelines that we'd have to adhere to through state statute. And so November tenth would be the day. And at the very earliest, this, we could have a special meeting on Monday, November seventh. However, the time window of, of is that short. So just, I just want to make a note of that, but a, a public hearing is required.
So, and at that public hearing, with the warrant in its final written form, we would be reviewing, I assume, Michael, right?
Correct.
And at that time is when the Planning Board, I assume, would take a formal vote for support or non-support. Is that right? So, so at this time, if there's no further questions from the board, I'd like to take in kind of an informal vote. Obviously, you can change your vote at the, at the public hearing. But just a, a vote if we want to go forward and, and pursue this warrant article with, with Michael. Can I have a roll call?
Could we just make a, a motion that we are, I make a motion that we...
Make a formal motion.
I make a motion that we support the moratorium process to have it at a public hearing of the Planning Board the next available, which looks like the tenth or the seventh.
But well said, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And we'll have a roll call vote, starting with Deepa?
Thank you, Dave.
Nita, Sinitsky, aye.
Tala, Hon, aye.
Kassinger, stick aye.
Kevin, you want in?
Sure, Kevin, I'm telling you, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is six, zero, zero. And why don't we talk about dates, because this has to move forward quickly? So it's either November tenth, just a meeting, we could get it on with the advertising and everything we need to do. Or we can move it back and have a meeting just on this topic, say, on Monday, November seventh. What, how, what do people's schedules look like?
I mean, I, my preference would be to stick to our regular meeting time. I think that is efficient in the sense that the public can attend more than one hearing if they wish. And these things sometimes are interconnected, especially if we're still discussing the comprehensive plan. So I would, I would urge us to stick to our regular meeting time if we can.
I, I know everyone's schedule is really packed. Does that sound like the best idea for everybody?
Yeah, I agree.
And, and works for everybody else? Okay, then, Peter, we will look to add this to our November tenth meeting and will have to schedule other things accordingly with, with that in mind, that this will take a chunk out of our, perhaps a sizable chunk out of our November tenth meeting. So.
Uh, yeah, so mechanically, we will work to the November tenth meeting.
All right, so, Michael, I assume we will be seeing you on November tenth, if not sooner.
Yes, ma'am, and, and at that time, I'll provide a, a lot of the information that the board has asked for.
Okay. Is it possible to, a possible appropriate when that information is available earlier that it would be sent to the board?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your, for your support on this.
Thank you, we will see you in a few weeks. All right. Then the next item on our agenda is something that's been kind of kicked down the road a few times. It's the Elliott Street Site Plan Review Modification. Peter, I cannot remember. Peter, I cannot remember when we talked about this and when we approved it. All the time just kind of blends all together. But this literally is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the movement of one light pole in the Bank of America parking lot along Pond Street by Shaw's due to the fact that it was kind of in the wrong location with the Pond Street work and everything else going on there. Is that correct? Please, please sum up better than I did.
No, that is correct. This project goes back to, I believe, December of two thousand. Maybe I want to say two thousand twenty. It's fairly old. Not old, but it was done prior to the work started over on Pond Street.
Deepa, do you remember this, this, talking about the Shaw's lighting?
Yeah, I thought it was twenty-one, but maybe it was somewhere close there.
Anna, do you remember it?
Very vaguely.
Okay, so I'm not sure. I can't remember if Anna was on the board or not.
I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't think I was.
Okay, you might, you might not have been. I just couldn't come up with the date.
I think I vaguely remember the topic, but that may have been after I joined where it was being discussed. Like, I don't my apologies.
Feels like it was when Joe was there, so I don't think Anna would have been there at that time. Joe and
Yep, for the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first summer, I think they were together, actually. So, Peter, where do we, where do we take this?
So this is a request just to modify the site plan. So this work, this construction work, well, the installation of these two lights were reviewed by the planning board. And just to give you some background, the applicant, the applicant tonight here, Bill Sharkey, who appears on the screen. And Bill has provided us with some documentation concerning lighting standards from Bank of America, but also there's a lot of light, there's some lighting standards from the state of Massachusetts. And so since Bank of America sits on the edge of, not edge, excuse me, they hold the the last, I would say retail spot in that L shape. Three hundred Elliott Street kind of strip mall area. And on the on the end of the building is a drive up ATM. And so at the, really the crux of it is that Massachusetts has lighting standards for ATMs. They could save for the public to use. The Bank of America has lens standards. And the applicant was so kindly put together and explained the, gave us an explanation in an email dated October sixth, and he had a couple attachments, including that obviously, construction started and there was a takings in that parking lot. So the mass DOT took a took some square footage of that parking lot. They're creating a retaining wall in a right-hand turn only onto Elliott Street. So with these changes, the applicant is in front of us here today. And he is changing and are proposing to change the location of, like, use some traditional one out of the two proposed. I would say parking light, you know, parking area lights, which is going to make this a fair, you know, to bring the, to bring this ATM into compliance regarding lighting. Now, I know this is, everyone says lighting, okay, with this lighting, it's minimal. It's shoebox and everything is pointing down. They have dark sky lenses. And so they're doing, they're doing their best also to kind of minimize the impacts. So yes, and we did talk thoroughly about minimizing impacts back when we first heard this. But today we are only talking about the change in the location. And I believe it's only, you know, twenty yards or so. It's very minimal. But on the site plan, we can see that on sheet four.
Is that something you can bring up, Peter? Or does Mr. Sharkey have it ready to bring up?
Why don't I bring that up and then we can introduce Bill and Bill can introduce himself and talk us through any questions that we may have. Bill, would you like to step forward and introduce yourself?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Bill Sharkey. I'm with CBRE Real Estate and we're the property managers for Bank of New England, Bank of America in New England. As Peter mentioned, we did bring this project forward a couple of years ago. It's pretty standard for the bank. These are really driven for ATM usage. And mainly to make sure that the properties, the ATMs are lit really during all hours of darkness. You know, just to provide security, safety for somebody that may be using it at one AM or two AM. And, you know, we do a number of these really for all of the ATMs for the bank. You know, I think unfortunately with this one, this hit somewhere about where COVID started, and I think the bank sort of ran into a staffing issue, and I think the branch was closed for a while and you know, I think there was also a lease negotiation at some point in time. So, you know, the plant had initially been approved by the town. I'll, and the bank put it on hold for a while. Then we were told to take it off hold. And I live sort of close by and have some friends in Ashland and drove by one day and said, uh-oh, there's construction going on. And we noticed that, you know, the road had been dug up, the parking lot had been reconfigured and, you know, went out and you know, measured everything up. And unfortunately, we had a pole that was originally in the corner of the parking lot. Which, that corner is now gone. So we tried to relocate it as best we could. You know, again, in the same corner.
Can everyone see the screen? And so I just double-checked that this plan was approved December, for December of two thousand twenty, just to confirm that. But the two proposed poles are number one, this pole down here called AZ one U pole. That was approved in two thousand twenty. And then the B two up here, which is the orange the orange square, which says site note four. This was the previously approved location. This pole is being proposed to be moved to where it says AZ one U pole. And that is the one proposed change.
I think there's a page a little further on that has those dimensions that were mentioned.
Yeah, there's a dimension page, Peter, which I think is LU six.
There you go. At the time we reviewed this, we did look at issues of vegetation and the other lights, I think were also in play that we looked at. Looked at all the, everything having to do with the lighting.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so so I for one, if anyone has questions, you know, please feel free to ask them to Mr. Sharkey. I feel for one, feel very comfortable with, with this small change given our review almost two years ago.
My only question, Trisha, would be, wasn't that the same side where there was a neighbor who came in who is worried about the light spill? So is that the same on the west of this is where the neighbor is, right?
Yeah, it's down the hill from those two blue poles. It's on that side.
Yeah, is that going to affect that these two poles are now so close to one another? Is that going to create a little more pool of light? And is that going to create a little more disturbance to that neighbor that came up from the first call? I'm just curious about how that spill would be.
Bill, a question for you.
Yep. Peter, if you want to go up to LU four or actually, why don't you go up to LU three, which actually kind of shows the property line? There you go. LU three, I think.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yep, this is the LU three. No.
Oh, no. There you go, right there. The dotted line is actually the property line that goes around. And the grayed out section is really sort of the scope of where the project is. And if you go down, Peter, back to the photometric page, which would be LU four. Gives you sort of the entire site. I think if you kind of blow it up, what I'm looking at is I think realistically, if you're probably about ten feet off the back road behind the retail building, I think all the foot candles are at zero or zero point one, which is pretty negligible.
So all the, all the light goes to the parking lot versus the trees.
Correct.
It looks like in the proximity with the property line, all the foot candle markings are at zero.
Yeah, so the, the light spill is very minimal. The, the light, the light fixtures on the poles are also fully shielded in the back. You know, to help with the light throw. And, you know, these are all sort of dark sky compliant, so everything just faces straight down.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions on this? Poll moving? All right. If not, oh, Peter, do I need to open it up for public comment?
You can, you know, I think.
Okay, I will open it up for public comment because it is a public hearing. If there's any raging questions about light poles. But seeing none, I will entertain a motion to to what, approve the site plan modification?
Yeah, to approve the proposed site plan modification.
To approve the I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan modification for three hundred Elliott Street.
Make the motion to approve the site plan modification for three ten Elliott Street.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote?
Thank you, Dave.
Marcelo, Hon, aye.
Kassinger, Jersey, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, ayes. That is five, zero, zero. And hopefully you can now go forward as planned.
Tremendous, folks. We appreciate it. Thank you very much for the help with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is the one hundred Chestnut Street Site Plan Review. So I think the goal tonight. We're obviously continuing to review various conditions. We've been receiving a lot of documentation on that. Peter, is there anything else that we need to know on this? Is there any presentation that the applicant was hoping to, to give, or we just kind of going forward with our process?
No, I think obviously, I just want to say thank you so much for everyone that has taken a look at the decision. I know there was Tricia and myself and Emma met yesterday for a couple hours and went over the decision. So that's why the new decision was sent out today. And so, and I know it was prior to the meeting, so I apologize, but you know, I think it's definitely a fluid, a fluid document. I think the one item, and I know there was an email that I sent out to everybody in the attached email on Friday from the McDowell's and I will pass the microphone off to Roy McDowell. But they want to follow up on the conversation that the planning board had last meeting concerning additional affordable housing units and what that meant for the project. Was everyone, so I hope everyone was able to see that email, but at this point, I would, that is the one item that I believe was still being discussed by the board and based on development. And that, and that chair, if you would like me to ask the McDowell's that board to address that email, I think that would be appropriate.
Yes, why don't we do that before we move forward? Do that first.
Right on the call today, we have Roy, Roy S. and Todd here representing based on development. So I think that email did come from Todd into a Roy. So either Todd or Roy, do you want to step forward and kind of address the email and what was drafted in that in a response to the, the previous conversation with the planning board?
Sure. Todd, do you want me to do it or do you want to do it?
Be my guest.
Okay. So, as you all know, we did some analysis of what that would entail to add two more units, especially at sixty percent. And it had a very significant effect on not only the pro forma, but future value of the property. And as I had mentioned before, we, you know, working with the board now for over a year, been discussing the assumption, at least on our part, of the ten percent affordable and making a lot of agreements with the planning board on a number of issues. Going all electric, adding a bus stop, going to be doing solo panels. There's a litany of things that have added significantly to the cost of the project, but we've agreed to do all of those with what we thought was our understanding of having ten percent affordable. And as we know, we've added twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid upon CO of trails. Pay twenty-five thousand dollars towards affordable housing in the community as well. And I think what we'd like to propose to you is to increase our twenty-five thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars towards affordable housing in Ashland.
Any, any questions on that or any, anyone comment questions?
The understanding that that would be in lieu of adding additional units to be affordable?
Yes.
I mean, I, I think that's a good, that's a good step forward. From what I recall at the last our last discussion, there was not flexibility from the applicant as far as adding affordable units at the location. And I recall most of the board I think a couple of, a couple of us, not myself, but a couple of folks, there seemed to be a majority feeling that this topic is somewhat closed because we had not previously opened up that door wider. So I felt comfortable with that position because I sensed that that was the majority opinion of the board. And I certainly would support Roy's proposal to add additional contribution, if you will, to that trust.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I also appreciate the greater contribution being on the Inclusionary Zoning Committee. I'm very much aware that adding affordable units is not inexpensive for, for companies doing that, that it does have a significant cost. And I think the, I think it is correct that this project went in a different direction of the things that we were asking for versus affordable, which could have been asked for, but we as a board took this project in a, in a different direction that I think, you know, speaking in general, I or we feel was maybe more appropriate to the site and to the surrounding area. So, so I think this is, I think this is the way we move forward.
I agree. It seems to be a fair resolution.
Any other comments? Okay. So we will add that into our conditions. I think it's already at least the verbiage is a part of maybe the most recent with the twenty-five thousand. Was it at least part of the most current version of the conditions? Did anyone else have any comments of that before we move forward, though? Okay.
Not on that, but then are we going to look at the other conditions?
Yes, absolutely. I just wanted to say first off, clarify a few things. Usually at this point, this is a first, this is our first, as with the current board. This is obviously our first big project that we've really been working on quite a long time. And, and it's a complex one and has many different facets. Typically, and when we get toward the end of a project like this, we would be closing the public hearing Typically, and when we get toward the end of a project like this, we would be closing the public hearing. And closing the public hearing really would mean that, that the door is shut. That we basically are in a jury room together and, um, we take no more public comments. We take no more. Comments from the applicant. We ask no more questions, right? That would, that would be, uh, closing the public hearing. Um, as this is a complex project and as we. Are kind of working our way through with a first experience with many people on the board of a project this size, even I, you know, I haven't. I think this is the largest project I've done as well, so it's certainly not, um. Certainly not, uh, that common thing for me that we're leaving that door. I'm comfortable if the board is as well, leaving that door open until we absolutely need to shut it in case we have a question that we can ask it. As we, as we kind of try to, um, make our way through these, through these conditions. Does, does everyone, anyone have any thoughts on that as, as appropriate or inappropriate?
Are you envisioning a public comment section as well?
I, I'm sorry, could you, could you say that again?
Are you envisioning opening it up for public comment as well at some point?
No, no, not really at this point. I mean, if we, if, if we took a few public comments, we couldn't, we, we can, we can still do that if we want. Because the public hearing is still open. If we close the public hearing, neither can we take public comments. Nor can the applicant comment, nor can we ask questions outside of our box. Yeah, so, um, so, so that would be the reason I would let, leave it open in case we see a loose end that we want to ask a question about.
And I, and I think that makes sense. I think one of my kind of thoughts is. Yes, we would want to be able to ask applicant questions as we look through this draft. I don't know if there's any members of the public who, who want to take a comment. I do feel like sometimes these hearings go really long. Um, and if the decision or the draft was. A public document that we posted, I think it would make sense to take care of the public comment right now so that we can. Hear the public's input and kind of focus on the drafting. That would be my suggestion. So we don't wait until later for public comment.
We, we can do that, um.
Just a thought so that we can, we can get whatever. Like what items are our agenda, if you will, that we need to address that have come up in public comment?
Yeah, and then we don't need to add, we don't need to ask for any more public comments on this. Hearing at all, because we have already done that on multiple occasions. But I'll open it up to pu- public comment now. If anyone has a public comment on this project, we'll take it now. Um, and then we will continue on, continue on with our work. So. Um, while I'm just waiting a minute for that, the other comment that I wanted to make, which Peter briefly mentioned. Is that I met with Peter and Emma for quite a long time yesterday, as I had gone through basically. Everything I had on a hundred Chestnut Street, ta- trying to make sure, um, I understand it thoroughly. Um, the different referrals to different documents and different questions that I had. So all of those things, um, were either already checked, checked off in the conditions here. My questions were answered, or as you'll see in the red, in the newest document. Some little, some little things were added in. Some of that in red was, most of it actually was Peter's. Um, and, and other things that have come up. But, um, but I just wanted to make that clear as well, that we kind of went through it. Um, I went through my many questions very thoroughly and that's kind of, this is the end result document from all of that. So that's why it was kind of last minute, because it happened kind of last minute. Okay, so.
If I could, I, I very much appreciate, uh, your efforts, Tricia, in sitting down and doing that. And the efforts of other planning board members who've contributed. I think my comments came a while back and I did not contribute to this latest version, so I very much appreciate the effort undertaken.
Thank you. I do see one hand up, so I will take that one hand and that will be our public comment for today. Kathy Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. Um, I think that I'm not certain. That the design review committee has gotten answers to all of their questions, so I just want to leave that open question out there. Um, so I can listen to what's going on tonight and we meet next Thursday and we can have a discussion about it at our committee. I think I've already sent an email to that effect to the committee previous to this. So. Email, then I need to go through and resend it.
Yeah, I, I will say that, um, uh, in, even in my meeting yesterday with Peter and Emma. We actually, I had both your printed email in front of me as well as the notes, the final notes from the design review committee. Um, and the McDowell's, uh, response to those notes. So we did go through, um, item by item and, um, I think you'll see. That, that reflected in the conditions. Certainly not everything, you know, that necessarily went through, but we did look at those item by item.
There was a third email. Besides two comments. And if for some reason you don't have it, then I need to resend it. I, I.
I'm sure I have it and, um, this, this was an email that I have it.
Involves the berm and, uh, and, uh. The berm and the photo montage from the back.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. As long as you have it. So I'm curious as to the response from the developer to all those questions, because we. Have not seen it and appreciate seeing the response.
Yeah, but the, they, they did respond, um, and I don't know where that, the document went. It definitely went to the planning board. Um, and so we got those responses and, um, and looked through them and, and obviously read them thoroughly, so.
Great. It would be awesome if we could also see the responses.
Um, that would be a question for Peter and Emma to send those your way or perhaps they're online?
They should be online.
They're online, yeah. So, but they could be sent to you directly, so next time we will.
Directly.
We'll make sure that happens next time. So, okay. So, um, thank you Kathy. So now I think, I think the easiest way to proceed maybe is for. Peter, if you want to bring up the most current, um, conditions. Um, that was sent out today. So everything in the earlier version that people were looking at should, uh, should be in red. There'll be other things in red. But everything that was highlighted in the latest version of this is still highlighted. It's just in red versus, versus yellow, I, I think it was. Um, the, the colors, the highlighting always getting to be a little hard to read sometimes, but, um. The red print comes across pretty well. So, um. I think we'll. I'll be looking really for comments from the board, so, um, please. As when we get this up here and start, um, please jump in as soon as you see a point that, um. That you had marked on your document as well of something you wanted to discuss.
Okay, the screen is shared and we are rolling, so. Um, does anybody want to stop and do a look now? Um, Tricia, one thing we did add, just in the red. Are all elements concerning the architectural set that was prepared by I D O N?
Yeah, and just to note those, uh, dates on those drawings, um, actually, uh, are too early. There was a July twentieth set. Um, that, uh, that those revision dates will be updated to, and I think the July twentieth drawings. Um, are the latest set, um. If anyone from the applicant team. Knows definitively if that's the, if that makes sense to you, then, but, um, that would be a good confirmation, but that's the date I saw in the drawings.
Uh, yes, I believe that's correct. I, I sent those over to the, uh, planning department today.
Okay.
All right, yeah, we'll just double, we'll just double check those. I, I just want to. We took the latest and greatest we had and.
Yeah, the date before, the date on them was July twentieth, but it was way off to the left-hand side versus being on the, it was like a print date. Versus being on the, um, covered, being on the title block, and so it was a little bit hard to find.
Okay, we'll check out those and we'll, we'll come back. David, any topics or issues with this section?
Just a long list of drawings.
Long list of drawings, this is the list of documents.
I, I had no concerns until that first read on page six. What I recall is we talked about the importance of being very specific as to the use for this one hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I, I recall I, I had stated some concerns about kind of making of this sort of slush fund. I think Roy reassured me not to worry about that. And I think we talked about the importance of making sure in the decision that it was very clear that this was truly meant to address. Items that would enhance the community. Use of the property to contribute to the village, if you will, to the environment overall, not to. Items that, that lack a public element. At least that's what I recall is something I had asked for. I don't think we've put that in writing yet, and I don't know, you know, how the rest of the board feels about it, but I'd like to see some. Direct comment here that this is truly meant to be for. Projects that impact the public use of the space for the residents.
I'm sorry, through the chair, if I could comment on that?
Uh, uh, please.
Uh, what Anna says is absolutely correct. None of this money can be used for. Painting enhancement people's condos, putting a roof on their buildings. It's for not, it's not for that singular purpose. It's for the purpose of the overall community. You know, whether it's adding, whether it's.
Maybe the terms overall community is, is a great thing to add and, and then. I'm sorry, Roy, I interrupted you. And a couple of examples from you, we could put into a I E. Parentheses and a few examples that Roy is indicating.
Well, you could say something to affect, um. Condoms such as, as they see fit for the purposes of benefiting the overall community.
Wha- wha- what if we add, um, some language that says that, 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 that intended to be for the enhancement of, uh. Public space or public infrastructure of the community?
Perfect.
I like that better. Thank you.
Uh, Marcelo, what was that again? Um, to, to, to use as they see fit for, for projects pertaining. Public space or public infrastructure of, of the community. So that, of course, if they want to, to, to have a project to improve lighting on the streets, that would make sense if, if they want to create a. A better park for their children, that, that would make sense. But yeah, if they want to paint a couple of the condos, that, that, that doesn't cut it. It has to be public. I agree with Anna and, and with Roy about it. And I think, Peter, I said, uh, yeah, pop projects relative to public space or public infrastructure. Because I think I heard at some point that there were some issues that they wanted to address, so infrastructure would, would. Public space or public infra- infrastructure. Of the village.
And then I think you want to change that condominium just to community. Village of America, community is what you had referred to. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
How's that look to everybody?
Much better.
Okay, better.
Okay. We will roll on.
The next section on the, on the history, my only concern was. I want to make sure I understand the mention of the covenant. That raised a, a kind of a question for me. As to whether we need to get. The select board's approval of, of our, of our decision. In other words, because there was a prior covenant. Signed by the town, and I believe the select board and the planning board at that time signed it. I just wanted clarification from Peter procedurally. Whether our decision then has to be kind of approved by the select board as a formality in light of the prior covenant.
I don't believe so, and I don't believe any other, I, there's been no. And, and I say this, Anna, because I, I, I've never seen the select board have any. I've never seen anything that the planning board, excuse me, after that somebody. And I think, I think my recollection is that we discussed this with Lisa and power of legality of the covenant. I think that was, that was discussed then. And that was clarified to my recollection, not that there was no need to that.
Yeah, my recollection was she said that if we're not changing the substance of the covenant, there was no need. And I just don't know if this latest draft has been reviewed by Lisa and if we should be thinking about that. Maybe we can revisit that at the end. Um, it's just something that, this reminded me of Lisa's presentation and the question of. Are we in any way with our draft shifting anything in the covenant? I haven't thought it through and I don't know if Lisa has, and I don't know if Peter has raised it with her. But her, I, I agree, she was saying if there's no change of the covenant, we don't need to worry about the select board. Um, I guess what I'm saying is maybe we can confirm that once we're done, so that.
I'm happy to confirm that and just to note it. Lisa's, Lisa's seen every draft of this decision, so she's seen this in multiple times. And so she hasn't seen this draft in particular that obviously Tricia and I worked on yesterday.
Yeah, I guess whatever draft we land on, the final draft that we wrote on, I would like it to be. Shared with her so that we assure if there is a covenant issue that we separately sign whatever it is we need to sign.
Hundred percent, yep. So, that's. Point taken.
All right, anything on, that was history. Anything on the next section, parking? And these are, these are kind of the findings. They're not really the conditions.
Yeah.
Um. In, in fact, um, just for clarification, the one hundred and fifty thousand was put in this part of the, um. Of, of the document versus the condition part of the document. Because as Peter noted to me yesterday, it's really an agreement between two private entities. Versus the other, the other monies that are going to be donated go to. Town committees, and so they're related to the town. This one, this hundred fifty thousand really is between two private entities. Is that correct, Peter?
Uh, yes, and, and, and I don't see fit that we stand in the way of the, the, the agreement. That base though is made with the Village of Americas and, 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 and I don't see any mechanical way that we. oversee the control of those funds. And so therefore, I, I, I feel like it's, we should note it in the findings and, and we should. It should not be a condition, um, and, and it cannot be a condition that we oversee.
All right, so we're at parking. Any, um, comments on parking? Otherwise we will move on to sustainability.
I have one on parking.
Okay, yep.
Sorry, I didn't email it out this week.
No, it's okay.
Uh, we had talked about at one point that. This, you know, that they'd check back in on the parking in a year or so. And then maybe it could go either way, that if there was too much parking, we could reapprove giving back up to fifteen spaces to. Green space, but.
I, I think the conditions talk a little bit about that, um, Kevin, but, uh, Peter and Tricia, is, is that correct? I, I read something to, to that effect. I addressed that in the condition, Kevin, but I can put that up in the findings and just so they can correlate between the two of each other. Just so they could, there, there's a cross reference between the findings and the condition.
Okay.
Easily I can make a D.
Well, no, no, no problem. I, I think I'm, I didn't read the latest version of the conditions that came across today either, so. Maybe I didn't see that. I, I know the, if there's not enough parking was addressed, that they would state a parking pass program. I didn't know if we had it both ways or not.
Yeah, that's the part I'm not sure about either, Peter. We talked about the parking permit, parking pass program. I don't think we talked about pulling up asphalt and planting green space. And that's what Kevin's talking about, am I right?
Yeah, I, I know we mentioned it once, that like it. If there is, you know, way too much parking that we could, if, if we wrote it here, they wouldn't have to come back to us.
I see.
Because they would again be reducing parking and, and that is a special permit again.
That's right. We, we talked about it like up to fifteen spaces or something like that. Yep. So that would probably be something, uh, that would go in a condition versus. With, with the other conditions. Is that right, Peter?
Through the chair, may I ask a question about that?
Sure.
This is Todd. I, I, I just recall hearing, I don't know if it was from Lisa or on one of the calls, that there needed to be like a set number of spaces. And making a contingent is complicated, saying they might need to change in the future. Maybe I, maybe I'm misremembering what she said, but, uh, that just came into my mind.
I, I think this is different. I, I know what you're talking about and Peter might have to confirm. I think this is different. I think this is kind of saying. Hey, if you find that you have in the future. Hey, if you find that you have in the future, if you find that you have. A lot of extra parking and your residents really would like more green space. You don't have to come before planning board if you want to take fifteen of those spaces and change it into a little pocket park.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Is that right, Kevin?
Right, so you could write it like, um, you know, that. Parking study shows that there is an abundance of parking. Um, up to fifteen spaces is. Um, allowed and encouraged to be converted back to permeable space, planting space or something like that. So it's not like necessarily a requirement you have to, because I think that, you're right, the contingency would be hard, but. If your residents want it, you know, we say we encourage.
Okay, I I can write something up, but I can I can put something in the decision after.
Yeah, I don't think that's one we can write on the fly, but.
And I I I can email something to you too, I I just didn't get a chance to get into all this stuff till today.
Yeah, I know, it's um. I'm happy to take a, take a crack at.
Okay, any other comments on parking? Remember, we're still in the findings. That of the official conditions. So. Uh, so let's move forward into sustainability.
Did I, did I imagine in my super excited mind that the solar, the solar would go on within a year? Did we really agree to two?
We did agree to two.
Okay.
Yeah. You were super excited, Anna. It'll be six months at the next meeting.
I'm trying.
Just trying, just, you never know. Almost nine, maybe everybody will think it's only one. I'm just kidding.
I had a question about the EV. Parking spaces. You, uh, well, the um, the architect had provided a diagram, Matt had provided a diagram showing. A yellow line showing conduit, I think about potential expansion spaces.
Yes.
And when I counted those spaces, I counted eighty spaces. Some on one side, some on the other side. And this provide, this says fifty-eight, so I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if my numbers, my physically counting on the picture. Is what? Was intended or, I don't know where the fifty-eight came from, so.
I I think we were trying to give ourselves some flexibility, just not knowing. What um utilities might be going through there later, just if something came up, we have that area covered, just. Make sure we hit at least fifty-seven spaces or whatever, we gave ourselves some some leeway in case it needed to move one way or the other.
Okay, so what does that, what does that say about where that?
I think what Todd's saying is we put in additional conduit just in case.
Okay, but you, that you're, you're you're assuming that you're putting in conduit, but you may not be able to. Actually provide EV in those, this says up to. You know, uh, you know, provide up to, so that's why I'm wondering if the, if if we have a document online, we want, I just want things to be consistent. But if that document is showing eighty, then we're potentially providing up to eighty. Not necessarily providing them, but potentially. Um, versus the fifty-eight, which I don't. I can't count that on anything, I guess.
I have a question about that, if um. A few years down the road, they wanted to put a hundred percent of the spots EV because that technically is the way uh. I I think it's ticking this time, right? Ford's building a five point six billion dollar EV-only plant in Tennessee. Is that something they would? Have to come back to the board for? Or can they just choose to put in a hundred percent of the spaces? And the only reason I'm asking, because it's kind of like Kevin's point about. About the uh hopefully nice patio permeable surface we see there someday. Can we say it's, i- if if they would have to come back, I think you would give them the flexibility to put it in this decision. That they can put a hundred percent EV if they choose.
I I think this, I think this is about that they are going to put in the conduit. For these spaces now, which is already tied to the EV stations that they're putting in, so the conduit is located. Along the lines of the EV stations, right? So, but there's other parking that don't have any EV stations, so um. So that's why this number of spaces kind of makes sense, because they're along those lines. Um, I think, from my.
Right, but that that wasn't the um, the question though was, would they have to come back to the planning board if they wanted to make? A hundred percent of their parking EV?
I don't know. Todd, do you have your hand up this?
Yeah, there's nothing in this, there's nothing in this that restricts us from doing more. It's just saying we need to put conduit in for at least. This number of spaces. So um if we want to do the entire site, there's nothing that they, that stops us from. Or maximizes how many we can put in. It's just at the bare minimum, we need to, you know, do this.
Typically, you're just only required going to the building department or the electrical department to get a permit.
Right, right. That's, I don't think it'd be a planning board thing.
I I concur. I can add a sentence though to add some flexibility, just to make that note.
I don't think we need it if they wouldn't have to come back, I was just trying. Yeah.
I I agree with Kate.
Future.
And like I said, I think that that it, if. There is a, there is a diagram produced, and it can be checked, someone, we can, we can count the spaces, but I want. The diagram that's online to be consistent with this number. To me, that number, I I believe is eighty. So. And again, it just says potentially provide up to. But I would rather the two things match. So we can go back and check that, don't have to do it in the meeting today, but I'm going to keep it circled on mine. Um, I think the other thing I had on sustainability, if you can scroll down a little bit, Peter. Um, and you had fixed this early on. But if you look at E, the residential uni- units will utilize electric heat pumps. And you had changed that. Later. Um, in the actual conditions where it said both buildings, you might just want to copy and paste the verbiage you used later on. Into here.
Okay.
The one other thing I had. The one other thing I had um in this uh sustainability, and this was a question coming out of um. I believe it was coming out of design review committee. Was the nature of the roof, um, and if it is um a TPO roof versus an. EPDM roof, if it's white versus black, basically.
It's a white roof.
I assumed it was a white roof, because I don't know who puts on a black roof anymore. Um, but uh i- is that okay if we add that into the condition so it's listed?
Sure.
Alright, great.
Does the dark sky lighting belong there in sustainability too, or is that? Oh, it's being done, I just don't know if it's, or or maybe it's in the memo that is listed under NMG here. Or we, I need to rewrite everything.
Yeah, I can't recall. We can put it as a note. I can't recall if that is listed somewhere. I I know that um. I know it's described somewhere in the documentation that that is what is happening, but I can't remember if it's in the document somewhere.
It's on from the plans as well.
Great, okay. Alright, and then the criteria. Uh, which is the next section. These are the things taken directly from the bylaw that we need to review for the special permit. The special permit in this case. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, was really about the size, the amount of parking, right, the amount of parking.
That's correct.
Um, is the reason, is the only, is the sole reason, correct me if I'm wrong, is the sole reason that they need a special permit?
Excuse me. It's early.
It is.
Uh, yeah, that is the sole reason.
Okay. So the special permit um kind of revolves around that parking issue, but that said, everything relates back into the project. And all the conditions are identical. For the site plan review and the um and the special permit, so we need to look at them in that light. The criteria, however, are taken, the criteria are related to special permits. Um, in the uh, in the bylaws, and the special permit is for the parking. The only thing I, let me, yep, the only thing actually I had to add. Um, in the criteria was um. In B, toward the end, it says the planning board grants a special permit to reduce the acquired amount of parking. And I think we should have in there from X spaces to X spaces, right, like. What is the required amount of parking? And what is the amount of parking that's actually being provided, just the numbers? So I don't think we have that listed anywhere in here, what the. What the required amount is. I know we have the final amount, three fifty-seven or something like that, but I don't think we have the original amount.
Yeah, we can do that.
The other thing I wanted to add, which is a quick fix, as you have it open. In A, the very first line. The planning board finds the applicant's proposal to develop a primarily residential building. Because there are other features in the building. Okay. Alright, um. Anything else on the criteria, A through F? If not, we will continue into the meat of the document, which is the special. Project, the project conditions. So the first of these are. Taken from um, first of these are taken from the covenant.
That's correct, yep, the last, the first. Number one. Yep, A, B, C is all from the.
And then I believe. The rest of the conditions on there are taken from. The. Is that the two thousand seven? A, B, and C are directly from the covenant.
That's correct.
But two through seven are from the two thousand seven. Um. Site plan review conditions, is that right?
That's correct. They were, they kind of morphed from that document, yeah. And obviously, we added, you know, we inserted the the seven, which kind of talks about the. The erosion patrol plan, ownership of the basin, and obviously post-construction, the existing stormwater basin is going to be owned. By the Village of Americas Condomineering Association, and the responsibility of that basin is going to lie. With the Village of Americas Condominating Association, based on development. Is going to be a member and or part of the condominium association. I just want to be clear that the basins are going to be owned and maintained by based on, it's still going to be owned and maintained. By the condominium association, based on, correct me if I'm wrong, Roy and Todd, you will have a seat at the overall condo. America condo, the Village of Americas Condo Association Infrastructure Committee, which therefore will be in charge of maintaining that basin. Throughout the years, and obviously, uh, that is a big piece, because right now. The fat front company, FRE Building Company, is in the process of, well, has been working with Conservation Commission. To re-enter the basin and to um. Really dredge out all the invasives and bring that basin into compliance. Um, and and they have to do that prior to handing over ownership of that basin to the condominium association.
Uh, that is all correct, Peter.
So, just to put all the cards on the table, explain that condition for all political members. Um, that's the, that that's a major element that the town sees great importance in, is to see that basin um. Theoretically get rebuilt, right, um, prior to handing over. Uh, but also as part of this decision, um, as GCG has reported, you know, in their many, in their many letters, that. This is um. A, a, a opportunity of leverage for the town to seek fit. And obviously, based on, have been working with FRE Building to make sure that gets done, uh, because it is their ownership and their responsibility.
And we're, we're told that'll be undertaken over the next few weeks.
So I have a question about that, so it's um, we're putting a condition for a completely different entity that is. Shifting responsibility to another entity, well, not really shifting, I guess they technically had it and didn't do it, but. Something doesn't quite seem like super enforceable. About that, so. Um, I I definitely have concerns about that, the way it's written.
If if through the chair, if I could address that.
Please.
So as we all know, the the uh FRE has their enforcement decision from the Conservation Commission. To in fact restore, clean up and restore the basin, which they're going to do very shortly. Uh, when you look at the original decision and you look at the plans on the decision by the CONCOM at that time. It's, it's stamped on the plans very clearly that it is the responsibility of the current owner of the land. And once that is complete, it becomes the responsibility of the condo association. HOA and their their various committees to maintain that. Now, once we take ownership. We will become a member of that committee as well. And rest assured, we'll make sure on an annual basis that's taken care of, because when you take care of something on an annual basis like that. It's quite easy to do. When you wait twelve years, it becomes a ridiculously large project, which is unnecessary. So it'll always be our goal to make sure that's properly maintained, because it's quite inexpensive if you do it annually.
Peter, is this in the same category as, or a similar category as? You know, the roads in the Village of America, they're owned by Village of America, right? They they take care of their own plowing. Um, and so if there's damage to those roads, they're responsible for fixing them. When does the, when does the town step in at any time? In a community like this to say, whoa, this has really gotten bad, you guys have to do something about it?
The town is most likely not going to step in and and especially considering the roads, um. So the basins come into a different category, not category, but kind of come into play with the state's new MS four permit, right? And so now the state is requiring cities and towns to make sure that stormwater basins are up and are compliant, and they're operating. They they they're being maintained, and so this basin is in particular because it kind of meets, it needs to. Meet the MS four permitting program with the town is obviously, uh, which which the town. Has to adhere to, which is from the state level. Regarding the roads, uh, but but the the town is not going to go in and take ownership. You know, and and that's a, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, because you can with these storm basins. Um, but the, i- if it's functioning, if it fails, then the town would therefore have to go in. Um, and and I'm sure the town would subcontract out, and then the town would just leave that property. They on, you know, lean uh the the bill that is received on that property. Um, and then obviously, they're going to have to go forward, and they would have an unpaid bill. Um, and then obviously they're going to have to go forward and they would have an unpaid bill, you know, from the town after.
Kate, does that answer your question, or is there something, something you're looking to actually add into the text?
Um, well, I just saw the red now because it came at a time when I could not read it. So I guess I'd want to look at it, um, but. I, I do know, but the, the difference was, so the two thousand seven was the same owner, right? And that's the, we, that's always been an issue to make sure we're interpreting that correctly when it's now in the process. Ultimately, this decision for a different owner.
Well, the key thing, the key thing is the current, the previous owner is still the current owner.
Correct.
The current owner is responsible to the Concom to bring this into compliance. And I believe somewhere in your decision, it says we can't get a C of O until such time as it is in compliance, so. One of the conditions, one of the conditions we have with the seller, number one is they take care of it. Number two, we're, we're going to also make sure that it's done in compliance, because once we take ownership, it becomes a burden of ours. So we're vested interest to making sure it's done correctly and in a timely fashion.
Yeah, and I think that was also because there was language about the Concom and I making sure they're like. Tight to each other, et cetera, too, so I'll have to look at that later.
Actually, in number seven, if you look at the last section of that. When it talks about the uh, storm, existing stormwater basin is owned by Village of America condominium association. And it becomes a responsibility of a village. And that's the same language of basically was in the decision back, I think it's two thousand seven or eight. And that's the reason why they're in front of the enforcement with the Concom now, to bring this back into compliance.
On the end, if something goes wrong, Concom steps in to make sure it gets done.
Correct.
For the betterment of Ashland as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, just a note in this, um, this section as well, before we move it on, there's several items in here. List of hardy and salt tolerant plants. There's a applicant submitting materials for proposed signage. And there is stamped documentation for a pre-cast retaining wall. These are things that are taken from those previous conditions that were recommended that become a part of our conditions, so the um. The planning board may be seeing an odd document here and there, um. Um, you know, in the future on, on this project, so. But those are the ones that were carried over. Alright, moving into other conditions that were um, GCG recommend, recommendations. Sometimes there's overlap, obviously, in, in these things, um, based on where the original condition came from, but. Um.
Yeah, so the first one is GCG, uh, concerning again, the operation maintenance and stormwater basin. And that's just reaffirming that point. Um, nine.
Number nine, I think Kevin had to go offline, but it was one of the things he had talked about is the final paving, the painting of lines. Um, so that is, that was part of the GCG punch list and is in there. Number ten, I did have a question about, and we had brought it up before, but maybe didn't um, settle on a time, because. Remembering now on number ten, that the part, reduced parking spaces, the residential and the commercial are sharing spaces. So here we have the commercial space uh, between the hours of six and midnight. I think we were talking about a few lines up that we're not doing a restaurant. So midnight to me seems a bit late um, for a, a commercial space to have operating hours, um. Do we have a better, do we have an hour that we want to put in there that would be more appropriate for a commercial space? I don't think it has to be super early, but I don't see it as midnight.
How's eleven PM?
Well, what, what kind of businesses are we talking about? I mean, a typical business. I, I would say probably nine PM would be the latest, but I don't know what other type of business would go up to eleven unless it's a, an entertainment business, right?
Well, the only, the only thing I can think of is if you have a doctor that does extended hours, or a dentist, or a lawyer, or a real estate office. N- none of those people are going to be there at midnight. Uh, might they be to the ten o'clock? They could be.
And I, and I don't think that includes business owners that are working in their, their own space. I think that includes retail, that's retail hours, hours of operation, um, so um.
We change that to limited to the retail hours off, and then make it six AM to, if you want to make it ten, make it ten.
I think retail is just the, um, I think retail is the, the wrong word, because it might not be retail at all, um.
How about hours of operation?
That, that's what you have in there, which I think is appropriate, so I'm okay with ten. Marcelo, is that, I, I was good with nine too, but I think.
Yeah, that's fine, I think, I think after that time in such a big residential area, I want to let people sleep in case. I think ten is appropriate, seems to me.
Alright. Alright, moving.
What if, what if we wanted a WeWork for planning board people? We, I'm just joking.
Then it has to be until eleven thirty.
Exactly, right.
I think we should make it even earlier than, you know, eight thirty, tops.
Through the chair, I have a question on twelve and thirteen, I just saw them earlier this evening. Um, I'm used to doing bonding when we're cutting into sidewalk city streets. You know, things where we're going into public infrastructure. In this particular case, we're really not going into the street at all. And I'm wondering, what is the purpose of this bond?
Peter, do you want to handle this one? I think.
Absolutely, I can take that, I think, you know, and, and Tricia, I talked to you yesterday, and obviously Roy with a conversation earlier today. Is that, you know, when, when, when this project is, has been reviewed by the town, all town departments. Um, there has been, not in this project or a conservative basin development. But there are um, concerns and everyone here's, uh, has, has seen situations across town. Where the developer uh, ceases to um. You know, halt operation due, you know, um, materials indoor um. Backlog of, of, and, you know, backlog of materials, but also workers. Um, and so therefore they leave the site, um, uh, I would say open. And uh, not in a secure, safe manner. Uh, and so therefore it necessarily, you know, they do or they do not may leave the site open. Which is a, or, or risk to that safety and welfare of the resident population. And so other depart, you know, departments um, have asked me about this. Uh, I've talked to town, the downtown manager and the town council. And the only way to kind of provide some surety. Um, in a manner uh, that kind of obviously has, keeps the applicant. Um, to the table is that maybe i- is to have them submit a bond as a condition. To um, to put up in, in the effort that if anything does go wrong. Um, and or if, if, if a developer would walk away from a site. Then the town would have some, so have the ability to go after some funds to secure the site. Now, this is not going to be public infrastructure. Um, this is a ma, this is the manner in which the town holds surety in the event of subdivisions and subdivision development. Um, and so this uh, condition was drafted and it was actually reviewed by town council. And it was just put in here, um, obviously, um. Uh, this is the first time the planning board's seen it, but from the town's perspective, perspective. It uh, gives the town um, surety, right? Um, indoor financial security, um, that in the event something does happen to the developer indoor of the site. And the site is, is, is left in an unmade, you know, untamed indoor organized order. Um, that the planning board can, can, to, to retrieve and go after the bond and take the bond. Um, and secure the site to protect, like I said, the health, safety and welfare of the community.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are things that are currently happening in Ashland. And we see problems that we're not protected from and are determined not to be left unprotected again.
So through the board, through the chair, if I could ask a question.
Please.
Um, what I'm hearing you say, Peter, is for some unlikely event that. The site became abandoned, you want to be able to secure it, Allah put a fence around it or something like that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that being said, it seems like an excessive bond. Um, I mean, you could fence the site twice for fifty thousand dollars. Could we agree on a bond of a hundred thousand dollars, which I think is more than adequate?
I think part of that though includes, and, and maybe this also might be more than adequate. Is that if, uh, if the site is left as a pile of dirt, basically, right? Like it's partially, if the project has started, the site work had been done, but it's left. You're going to need to cover over that with some kind of plantings, just so that you don't have. You know, the dust and dirt, you know, going out into the community. So it includes that as well, so secure isn't just necessarily putting a fence around it, it's other things. Make it stable until there's another person that's picking up the project.
It's really a stabilization, you know, I think, I agree, you know, I think we could come down on the amount, you know, I think, um. You know, two hundred thousand dollars was a starting, was a number, you know, a starting point, but um. You know, I can, I can talk to other departments to see what they feel comfortable with, but, but, but I do, I personally do feel comfortable. And obviously I do want, you know, I did want to add in the set the last sentence, right? The bond, uh, in any event can be reduced upon, you know, partial completion of the project. Um, and so obviously, um. As the site would move forward, just in, as a typical roadway, in, in the subdivision. Um, the app, the app, they would have the ability to decrease the bond, um, in any event. Um, as progress was obviously being, you know, made and made on that side.
No, I appreciate that, I would, I would appreciate if you to explore the possibility of reducing that to a hundred thousand dollars.
I can, I can do that for uh, for the applicant, yes.
Thank you. If I could, one more point on the number thirteen. Uh, I understand the purpose for this, and it's a little bit open-ended. Can we agree to a not to exceed cap of twenty five thousand dollars? And that's almost four, three and a half times what you're, you think it's going to be.
Yeah, and, and I can just speak into the, speaking to the planning board and obviously respond to the applicant. I agree that is plenty of money, you know, a, a, as this construction moves forward and, and. And, and, in, in the event, I, I do not see spending the entire seventy five hundred dollars. Um, that, that is requested within this condition, and um. And I have no problem as, as, as the planner to, to agree to that. And, and would feel comfortable with the planning board adding, uh, a not to exceed limit.
Um, I have a question about that, because uh, like you said, the red showed up, not time for me to read, but I. I was um, wanted to bring up basically, I think this covers it, the idea of a clerk of works, because. I mean, we have a much, much smaller project that did not get built to plans. And I feel like um, this, we, we can't, we should not have. That happen in Ashland, and I think that would be something that we have to consider, um, probably on almost any size project. So I kind of want to see what, what that's really covering, and I think it's the intent of clerk of the works, but. Like I said, a very small project did not get built, well, more than one, that in my recent reference.
More than one, yep.
Yeah, I think this is a really, really serious issue.
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand what you mean.
Um, was more, is more to Peter, like I, I want to know how we're going to cover that role of clerk of the works to get. Everything we ask for from the town of Ashland, that's our job. And I want to do our best job to get everything that Town of Ashland has promised.
Well, I will say, as you, as you all know, this, this project is under controlled construction. And what that means is every aspect of this job needs to be signed off by the professionals for each aspect of the project. That includes our uh, a si- si- uh, site engineers, our um, engineers for compaction. Our architects, our structural engineers, so everything is very much done in a controlled fashion. Not only do our lenders require it, but in order to get a C of O, we need to submit all these things to the town. So there are quite a few checks and balances in place, and I think given. This process you have with a cap that we're proposing, I think the town will be well covered. I mean, Marcelo, you're an architect, you, you know what I'm talking about, controlled construction, correct?
Uh, yeah. I, 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 I think that the, the safeguards are implicit on the requirement of the administration of the building code. And, and all the, all the permits and the inspections that the town will do during construction will, will guarantee that, so um. I, I personally don't, don't, don't see a problem in the, the, the way Peter explained it. If it has proper coverage, um, I'm, I don't have any objection.
So you think putting the, the, the cap of twenty five thousand would be appropriate, Marcelo, given the other checks and balances that are happening?
Yeah, I think so.
I guess the question is, and it's something I wanted to go through here, but the other two projects, how did they get to? A lot, a lot has changed from those two projects to today, um, granted. So that might just solve the problem right there, but um, but somehow. Assuming those two projects were, at least one of them would, I assume would be out of construction control that. Um, that it's still slipped by. Um, I'm not sure how that happened, maybe because they were non-structural, more designed things, um. But uh, but we want to make sure, as Kate was saying, we don't, kind of tired of that happening, you know? So, but uh, but I'm comfortable putting a cap on it if, between all these methods of control. You know, there's, we, we make sure it gets built the way it's supposed to be built.
So we, so that number thirteen, though, I didn't specifically get an answer of what that actually means. Like boots on the ground every day and every other day, I, I like the reporting part, but I can't get a real sense of what that means.
Well, number one, boots are on the ground every day, from the DPW to myself for the building commissioner. Indoor local building inspector, or, or any, any other inspector, wire and plumbing. So boots are on the ground. This, this money covers the cost of a, of a professional civil engineer. Typically for the town of Ashland, that is GCG, um, who does the, are all of our site maintenance processes. They're coming out to the site and they are looking for the site to make sure the site is safe and secure. But number one, that the installation of all stormwater drainage and all civil work is done. To a professional standard that is uh, proposed within that segment.
Okay, so we got the civil site work, awesome, that's great, and now we still don't get the building line. And this is no offense to Roy and his people, it's just, it's a generalization of literally. I live very near, one of them happened, so I know very well, and the other one, these are very recent. This is a much larger scale, the previous project with the, with the current owner that did have requirement for clerk of works?
Well, I, I will say that we, given our experience with projects like this. We have inspectors on the project almost every day, whether it's a, a foundation inspection prior to pouring footings or. Uh, compaction testing or um, electrical inspectors, plumbing inspectors. You know, you're digging trenches to put plumbing under slabs, I mean, there's constantly inspectors coming by the job site. To say nothing of all the reports we get and all the reports we have to give the town. For controlled construction and permits and approvals, so. Unlike, you know, much smaller projects are not as well managed as large projects. Large projects have an extremely large vested interest between the investor, between the developer, the. Uh, the lenders, everybody else, so there's a lot of eyes on a big project, not so much on a small project.
Yeah, I, I would agree, and I think that the, uh, what I was getting at before, I think Peter explained it well. I, I think if the town wants to be secure, um, in, in general, in terms of side work. Or preliminary work to get to the point where the project's really getting going, I, I g- I guess I get that. Beyond a certain point, it's really, the, the, the building inspector has a lot of, of leeway in administering, administering the, the compliance. Um, um, sometimes we see uh, uh, inspectors that do not require field reports. More than on a monthly basis or, or what have you, some of them want them weekly, and, and I've done them. Um, so I, I, I think the, the, the building commissioner would, and, and different authorities requiring inspections. Had the chance to, to, to request a, like a little more strict application of the code. So, so it's, it's really in the prerogative of the building officials or the, the town officials, I guess, to, to request that, um. But I would agree that I, 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 I just, I, I personally have never been in, and I've done projects of this size and, and, and larger. I, I, I find it difficult that, that the town will not. and, and larger, I, I, I find it difficult that, that the town will not request a lot of supervision inspections and third-party reports from, from.
The, the board, the conditions are in here based on other projects that we've seen in the past. Um, but I do think it's a different set of conditions now, we, we have two big buildings going on currently. Um, and there have been some changes since those other buildings happened that I think put these other two buildings on a much different, are on a much different track than those smaller buildings. Um, so I agree with that, that the bigger buildings are actually, seem to be much more in control than the smaller ones.
I think that makes a lot of sense and reasonable.
So I, I do buy that argument, uh, but, yeah, we started out this plan, we're reading about capacity, we don't know what's going on with all these things, so we're testing out a brand-new set of people that we think are gonna work under conditions that have an extreme amount more than we've been building. And again, the, the prior, um, applicant that was building things, that was a condition to have a clerk of the works.
I might also, if I go through the chair, the other thing I think it's important to bring up, in order for us to get a C of O, we have to submit to the town of the building department as-built drawings for the entire project. And those as-built drawings, including an altar survey, which basically outlines and lays out the parking, the fire hydrants, you name it, it's very, very detailed. So unlike smaller projects that probably don't do those type of things, this is the big checks and balances at the end of the day. And our contractors know that you can't deviate from the plans, cause when the as-builds come in and we wanna get a C of O with a building that's already done, we can't afford to have mistakes.
Well, why don't we, um, I mean, I, I guess we can, you know, take, uh, just an informal, um, vote of the board to see who's comfortable with this. Um, I don't know if Kevin is there. He may have had to step away. I, Deep is off my screen, I think.
You know, I'm uncomfortable with the change.
Okay.
I'm convinced after hearing the conversations, I'm feeling convinced right now, so I'm good.
Okay. And I feel the same. Marcelo, you seem to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Kate, I think your, your concerns are well-understood and, and witnessed, um, in, in town, um, as, as well, so, but, um, I think we're taking big steps forward here, I think we're in a different environment, I think we're in a different project scale. And, um, and I'm comfortable with where this is, and it sounds like the board is as well. Maybe not a hundred percent, but, um.
I would also, I mean, I, I personally just think we have to be careful about making reasonably big changes and not getting them out in a timely fashion, asking people to essentially vote on them, so.
Well, we're not, this isn't final vote of this document, this is just something we're looking at today, it can be changed next, next time if we want, right? So, um, I'm just looking for a way to move forward for today, this, this can resurf, until we take a final vote on this project, anything can resurface. So, maybe people will think about it and think, and ask for more information and think differently. So, I just think we need to move on today, or tonight, so. Okay? Cause I think other, other things in here might, people might have questions about too, but we need to go on to other topics. All right, I don't think I have anything else until. I don't think I have anything else until I get to twenty-eight, so.
I have something on page twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was.
Actually, I do too, but they're basically typos.
The, the dog park, my only question about this dog park is, the way this is drafted is it's open to the residents of the Village of Americas. No, I'm assuming it's within walking distance of the commercial space. And in the spirit of this kind of village, the village feel of what this area is supposed to be, I, I was curious if we could make that less exclusive and more open to the public as well. Could we frame it as open to the residents of the Village of the Americas, including public utilizing commercial space in the village? You know, I can, I anticipate somebody potentially being there with their pet and wanting to walk over to the dog park, and I think we should encourage that type of traffic.
So we could just say, and re, and related commercial businesses?
Sure, businesses, exactly. I, I, I just don't wanna shut it down to the public, I don't want it to be perceived as this is exclusive just to people that live there, I think it should be.
Related, related businesses and their patrons, I guess.
Exactly.
Yeah, we'd be fine with that. Uh, our intention just wasn't to say this is the public park, do it as you please, but to maintain some control, but that said, we're not gonna be, you know, you're not gonna use your key fob from your apartment to get into the, the dog gate, it's, you know, it's, um, we're just trying to make some control without it being a, a completely public park.
Yeah, and, and I guess I'm not really troubled by a public park. Um, I don't wanna open up that can of worms and say this is a public park, but I, but I, I personally would prefer ambiguity and the ability for those who are in that area, the public utilizing that space to be able to come there and enjoy it. Clearly, they're gonna be parking where the businesses are to walk over to this, and you would want that as a business, I think you want that, so I wanna encourage it as much as possible. I don't wanna call it a public park. You know.
We're, we're okay with the language you're proposing.
Great.
We think, we think that's fine. Our concern was, we didn't wind up with three hundred dogs in the park.
Right.
I think Ashland State Park takes care of that problem for you.
Good.
Uh, I have a question on twenty. It, I think, well, it was, it's twenty now, so the, the last sentence, so, so the affordable housing, and again, you all know that we've had sometimes not language to get what we want, and again, no reflection on the current applicant, just, this is making a contract. That makes sense. Said unit shall be created such that they will be included in the town's subsidized housing inventory. Um, but that doesn't, that's not a contractual with DHCD, um, term that I know, it's, they use capital subsidized housing inventory, but I think it also has to be more language that says like subsidized housing inventory in accordance with DHCD forty B, blah, blah, blah. Um, so I don't, I don't think that last sentence, um, is rock solid to, it clearly indicates the intent, but I don't think it covers actuality.
Through the chair, if I can make a comment?
Sure.
What if it said town subsidized housing inventory in conformance with DHCD?
Probably getting closer, a lot closer, but I, I think we probably could get Lisa Me to help with the, exactly.
She has, she's.
Yeah.
And this is the same exact word, I mean, that came from the service apartments in Zola.
That's fine, but.
How do you wanna write it? But.
Uh, well.
All going on.
We, there isn't anything such as the town subsidized housing inventory. Again, if you go on the website, it's capital, it's not the towns, it's actually DHCD in the forty B, so it's, it's, we all know what it means, it's a shortcut, but I don't think it's a good contractual, contractual language.
It does say shall, shall meet or exceed that the Department of Community Development's definition of affordable units in perpetuity.
Uh, right, but if we get to there, the in quotes, affordable units, then you get into that whole can of worms as well.
Well, the, the key thing is, if, if you meet the requirements of DHCD, then the units actually count towards your inventory.
Um, that would probably be so, and that means this is messy word again.
Well, let's not, I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste time like nitpicking all these words, Peter. If you can take one more pass at this, if there's language that the DHCD likes to include, then let's include that language. But, um, it doesn't look like anyone at the table is a, is an expert on it, so let's get the information and, and just get it in there right, but not waste more minutes on it here. So, the only thing I had in this is, um, that in the second line of twenty, where it says no more, it should be no more than twenty-five percent. It's just a one letter on the word that should be than, um, yeah, that's it.
Could I, I'm sorry, can you really quick on paragraph twenty-two? I meant to mention it, I know it mentions the town water. Peter, can you remind me, did we, is sewer mentioned somewhere in here, or do we need to concern, concern ourselves with sewer connection at all for this project, or any kind of expansion of a connection?
In, in what sense?
I just wanna make sure that we've, uh, I, I couldn't remember if this is previously discussed as, with the applicant, or if this project requires any kind of expansion of our sewer capacity or line.
This, this, this project of Village of Americas has always been, um, accounted in the town sewer capacity.
Yeah, and I believe that's, that was also mentioned on, on, on the letter relative to the, the sewer moratorium. Uh, the accounting this project and, and, and by everyone has, has not been an issue.
Understood, I just wanna make sure I understand, uh, okay, I don't have any further questions, thanks.
I think we're to, on twenty-eight, that, okay, that change has already been made.
Through the chair, if I could comment to twenty-seven to twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Could we make these subject payable with the time of certificate of occupancy?
Um, I think that would be fair.
Thank you.
If you don't have a certificate of occupancy, then, um, but other members of the committee, I think that's kind of the, the moment of trade in, in effect.
I think that's fine, we're using that as a starting point for the solar work as well, two years after, so that's fine.
And by the way, just so the board knows, we would love to do the so, solar sooner than two years. That's just an outside date, if, if we can do it before C of O, we'd love to do it. So until we get all our construction costs under control, given the environment we're in, we really don't know. That's the reason why we asked for two years, we would love to do it sooner.
Understood.
Yeah, I think that works. If, if, if they don't have a CFO, they don't have a project, so there's, there's plenty of incentive.
Right. Hmm, okay. I think then we're going into the, the general project conditions, which, um, really are the things that, um, are basically on almost every project. Obviously, you take some stuff out, you put some, maybe don't really put anything in, it's mostly just the stuff that goes along within every project, except that you take out things that aren't relevant, um. So, and Kevin, if we have anything that you wanna go back to, let us know.
I think I'm good, thanks.
One thing, um, one thing I didn't know if we just needed mentioning in here, it's an obvious thing, um, but throughout many things with GCG and to people, different comments, it always talked about getting that, that the project needs a stormwater permit. It's kinda like, duh, of course it does. But, um, but is that something we wanna call out with the permits, or is it just so ingrained into the process that, that nothing can, we have a lot of things for stormwater operations and maintenance, um, but, uh.
If I could comment on that?
Yeah, please do.
We have submitted an application to the Conservation Commission for that express purpose. And we had a meeting with them a few weeks ago, and the, as you know, GCG said, uh, all our stormwater, uh, is adequate. Uh, there were some members of the Conservation Commission, even though our plans were adequate, adequate, wanted us to make it even more robust and asked us to explore doing an Atlas fourteen, a Nova fourteen, which is a, a more expanded system. Uh, we looked into it, and rather than fighting it, we've agreed to do it, we've expanded our system. It's about fifteen percent larger than you saw it. And so we've submit that to the CONCON, we're going back to see them next week. And hopefully, given the fact that we've done that, hopefully that will satisfy them.
But, uh, well, that, that seems to, uh, seems to cover it. I'm also just looking in, um, under pre-permit, that number six, that's right at the bottom of the page there, talks about no land disturbance or demolition until all permits have been, um, have been issued from all municipal town departments, including, but not limited to conserve, Conservation Commission, Board of Health Public Work, so it seems like the, the, um, stormwater permits coming out of the Conservation Commission, so obviously you can't proceed without all the proper, proper permits, so maybe that's covered there, it was just a.
I think it does.
It's just a note I was making that, that may be redundant, so. Um, then on number thirteen. Um, for the special permit, Peter, I think that's four point three point eight.
I will double check.
Or sorry, nine point, nine point three point eight, yeah. And also, I couldn't find something about special permits, when, when looking at number fourteen, I couldn't find special permit having an appeal, is that because the appeal process is linked to the site plan review?
No, all special permits is, all special permits, all, all special permits and site plan review have, that, it, it's, it's section seventeen of forty, yeah.
Okay, but then the, um, then you say in fourteen pursuant to section nine point three point eight. So I, I just wanna, I just want those numbers to be double-checked, cause I, I couldn't, I couldn't kinda make sense of them.
Okay. I'll double check the numbers.
Cause nine point three point eight talks about the lapse. But then I wasn't sure what, I wasn't sure if nine point three point eight was appropriate in fourteen, cause that, that's about, that's about the lapse.
Yeah, lapse may just be for site plan, you know.
So.
I'll take, go look at both of these.
Okay.
I'm just gonna highlight them in yellow for everyone.
Okay. I just wanna get those, I wanna get those numbers, right?
Yep, we'll take care of it.
Um, the last thing I have, and I don't know where it goes, um, is that I'm wondering if we need something in here about, and I know this is already mentioned by the applicant, I already know they're doing it. But since there was a question from Designer Youth Committee about the amount of snow storage and the method, um, that you had already talked about, if you can't store the snow, you're gonna truck it offsite, um, at your own expense. And, um, I wonder if that should be in there as a condition. I think it's already, it's already a given, something you're doing, but.
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Would you like, would you like to draft some language, send it to Peter?
I'm fine with that, if it saves Peter some work, and then he can bona fide it as appropriate.
Works for me.
All right, so is, is there anything else that anyone wants to go back to on this today? Obviously, this is going back with Peter to take what looks like will be one more, the final pass, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, um. So, and then I would suspect that our next meeting, we would be ready then to, uh, close the public hearing and have any discussion we yet have to make on it, we've been doing a lot of discussing as we go along. And be ready for. We've been doing a lot of discussing as we go along and be ready for a vote on this, kind of the time.
I think that's fine. Did we, did we skip the criteria two-page document?
Oh, um, we did not look at the criteria for. Yep, good, good call. I don't even know where I have it in my pile here. There we go. Yeah, so again, the only thing that differs between the two documents, both documents are gonna be that long document. But the only thing that really varies besides the, the little bit at the end about that I was just mentioning with the getting the numbers right. Is the, is the criteria. So the criteria for the site plan review findings are A through A through L. I actually didn't have any further comments on those, but does anyone else have any further changes, comments on those?
Just reviewing my notes. I had some stuff circled, but I think I'm okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Right, anyone else? Any comments on these criteria?
I'm good as well.
Right, are others just thinking or are they good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Can we have Peter send out the edited version like that we did live? I know there's still some changes, but at least we're looking at the latest.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it out as soon as possible in the morning. Obviously, there are things that I took notes on and, and obviously elements that will be added too. So we'll send it out as soon as possible.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks to the applicant. Thanks for the planning board. I think we can continue this, hopefully for the final time. We're at that critical juncture, I believe. So, but Peter, when are we?
Our next meeting is gonna be October twenty-seventh.
October twenty-seventh? Okay, put it on October twenty-seventh.
I make a motion to adjourn to October twenty-sixth.
I'll second that. Anna Testmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. I don't know where Marcelo is. He might have, oh, there he is. Maybe stepped away. But anyway, we have enough to, to continue it. I assume that is acceptable to the applicant.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
So, Peter, is it allowed for, and I apologize to five oh one, but it is, it is, is it allowed for us to look at the reappointment for Ojwala Panaker for the Design Review Committee? So that she doesn't have to be hanging online through this public hearing? Can I take that out of order?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Then what I would like to do, folks, is to, if, if Ojwala is there, if she hasn't, I see her online, but maybe she stepped away.
Yes, I'm here.
I, I know Bill is unable to make the meeting tonight. Apparently, he is playing the role of Dracula in a local play and is at rehearsal. So, but Ojwala is here and the reap, the appointments for both Bill and Ojwala actually expired a few months ago. These, when there's not an election, these dates kind of blow by unnoticed. So thankfully, both Bill and Ojwala are, are interested in going a second term on the Design Review Committee. So like I said, Bill can't be here tonight, but Ojwala is, so I would like to take care of that before we move on to the second public hearing. So full disclosure, I actually, I know Ojwala personally. Our sons are very close friends. I actually suggested her to be on the Design Review Committee three years ago because she does have a background, a degree in architecture. So though she doesn't practice in architecture right now, and I thought she would be a good match for the committee. Um, Ojwala, do you wanna just say a little bit about yourself for those who don't really know you?
Hi, thank you, Trisha. So I'm Ojwala. I have been in Ashland. I've been living in Ashland for the last seventeen years. And I've seen the development through those years closely. And when Trisha asked me if I was interested, I told her it would be very interesting because I could see some of the development right around me. And I thought if I could make a little tiny bit, even a percent of contribution to make a better development, that would be great. So that's the reason I decided to be a part of the committee. And the last two years because of COVID, we had mainly Zoom. But I'm looking forward to the next two years. If anybody has any questions, you know, feel free to ask. Sorry.
Any, any, any questions? Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I think our approach in the, in the past with these kinds of scenarios is we just wanted to kind of hear about your vision, if you will, of the relationship between design review and the planning board. I'm trying to remember the last time, what types of questions we asked, but for consistency, I, I did, I wanna hear a little bit about that. And briefly, if you can speak to what you believe your strengths might be as far as contributing to the design review and, and the process.
So, like, you know, some, some of the projects that we have, we have been taking, looking into it, you know, makes a lot of difference when there are, you look at the aesthetic parts of it, like do we really need extra parking or if the parking lot can be converted into landscaped area or outdoor sitting or, you know, what are the other benefits of not having too much of built-up area or, you know, small, small issues that you, we can see through it. And also the design elements like like the height of the, the lighting plan in relation to the landscape. If they're clashing or, you know, so some of the things, they do make a difference that I see.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Anyone else from the board have questions for Ojwala? All right, then I will entertain a motion to reappoint Ojwala Panaker for another I think it's two-year term, two-year term on that. I don't remember, I don't remember if it's two or, two or through two. Two-year term on the Design Review Committee?
Also voting on Bill or are you gonna wait till he can be present?
I'm gonna, I, I think that's up to that. I know Bill a little bit. From just from your plan board, I, there's a lot of new members here, so maybe, maybe we'd wanna wait. But I, I was gonna do Ojwala first and then we can make a decision on that. So making a motion to, I will entertain a motion to approve Ojwala Panaker's application.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Anna Testmenitsky, aye.
I'll say, Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. All right, Ojwala, you're on for another two years and thank you for your service.
Thanks to all the members. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. So then the question is, do you know, I assume you would wanna ask him questions. I did talk to him briefly today. I told him that might be the case. That the board would prefer to, to actually talk to him, given that how many members of the board probably haven't had that opportunity. Is that what we would, what we would like to do?
And I think that would probably make the most sense to approach it that way.
Yeah, so we can, we can do that, right, Peter? We're not, they're not at quorum issues or anything like that, so.
I don't believe so without Ojwala back. And obviously, Bill can come to our next meeting on the twenty-seventh. And we can reach out to Bill and see if he's available.
Okay. Right, does that sound, sound good to everybody? Okay, then we will just, I don't think we need to take a vote on it. We can just postpone bills until the next time or, or whenever, when he's available. So. All right, so I would, I was also gonna suggest that we take a few minutes break and then come back to five oh one, I guess at that point. During the break, we will lose Anna for a while. So she gets a little bit more of a rest than the rest of us and then, and then we'll, we'll come back on.
It sounds good. And Peter, you'll just let me know when to log back on.
Five minutes good or too long? Nine thirty-five, we'll come back on. Okay, see you back here in four or five minutes. Okay, so. Looks like we have everyone. Obviously Kevin will be stepping in for Anna. Peter, can you, it's been a while since we saw five oh one. Can you just give us an update? We got the summary today. Um, but can you give us a, just an update about from the town's point of view where this is?
Excuse me.
Oh, if you're, maybe I shouldn't ask, sorry.
I was trying to eat the wa- watermelon too quick. I think some piece went down the wrong pipe. Um, so yeah, no, I'm sorry. Um, so five oh one Pon Street, uh, they have not been in front of us for a month now. And I think, uh, and due to that, the five oh one Pon Street. Um, was, uh, really number one, working on their, uh, reviewed, uh, submission, which they did submit, uh, previously with. The board last Friday through them, uh, very similar to based on our last development. Uh, that hundred of, uh, excuse me, Rogers Americas, um, um. Trust development with a five oh one Pon Street, uh, also, uh, had changed their stormwater calculations to the NOAA Atlas fourteen. Is that correct? And that was a due and that was done upon the request of the Conservation Commission. As, uh, five one Pon Street is working, uh, through the conservation process, uh, to obtain a, uh, stormwater permit. Uh, in, in addition to, um, uh, other, uh. Uh, other permitting, uh, within jurisdictions of the wetland, which I believe lies in town, the Paulston, you know, the wetland does. Uh, but with that said, the applicant, um. Submitted a newly revised package, uh, and, uh. And, and, and really that's what I have to add, you know, I think that it, it's appropriate to hand it over to, to the applicant and they can walk through all new items that were. Submitted and therefore, uh, we can discuss.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think what we're looking for, you know, what has been done, um, in that break, like, like you said, it went through, um. Conservation and also the third party review and then, um, kind of picking up what. This is a question for the board of, you know, what we feel remains to be done. So I will turn it over to the applicant, um. Mr. Stevens, are you? Want to, wanting to present?
Thank you, um, could Matt, uh, can we have Matt Stevens', uh, screen shared? Um, I'll, I'll kind of go through this quickly because quite honestly, from a plan perspective, um. There hasn't been many changes in the last month. What we've done is. Uh, we wanted to get essentially through the conservation process prior to coming back, just to make sure there wasn't. A substantial change, um, there. There's been some moving around of cul-de-sacs, some adding of cul-de-sacs and drainage systems, um. Some increases made for the, uh, Conservation Commission, both on, um. Uh, peak rate reduction, but also. Your bylaw, your, your zoning bylaw contains a volume, um, control. So we increased the size of our system to meet that requirement. Um, we did adjust to the new, um, NOAA Atlas fourteen. Rain standards, just because that's, um. Our request of the commission. So at our last conservation meeting, they closed the hearing. Um, their drafting conditions pretty straightforward, um. So our notice of intent has been closed and our stormwater permit has been closed. And we're just pending the next meeting to, um, issue the order of conditions. Um, like I said, it didn't really change the plan that much, uh, but what we wanted to do was get all of those changes put into the final set before it went to the third party review. Which did. Um, we also took the landscaping plan and updated it to match the, um. Sort of updated site plan. And that's all now in process, um, we did, uh, we had some final comments from design review, some final requests. If you will, from the designer review committee. And, uh, we put all, uh, we, we think we've addressed that with a separate, um, plan attachment. And we made some changes to increase, uh, similar to Chestnut Street. Um, increase the availability to, uh, make more unit, more parking spaces EV ready. So we're now up to forty percent of the parking spaces will be EV ready, uh, with conduits and that's on a plan set. Um. So very quickly, this is the, the, we've got the, uh, DRC comments maybe three weeks ago, but I just want to go through them quickly. Um, there was a couple of concerns about the views from the residents at Valley Farm and some distances. I'll put that, I'll have Matt put that plan up in a second. Um, there it is, right there. So what we did is superimpose the, um, site development plan from their project, the residents at Valley Farm. And our project, they're at, they're superimposed at the same scale. Um, their building only has windows on the front. So where I highlighted in red there, that's where their actual windows are. They don't have them on the side, um, they have the little courtyard and they have their parking there, their landscape. Then my landscape, if you will, and our parking. But the design review wanted to see this, um, so we put this together and submitted it. Um, so they could be a little bit better perspective on what's going on between the two buildings, um. They're about seventy-five feet. From their property line, they're about a hundred and fifty-seven feet from our building. Um, they're about eighty-two feet to the edge of our parking. So happy to talk about that, but, uh, I know that was something designer review wanted. Um, and Matt, if you could go back to the previous slide, I, um. There was, uh, initially some conversations about reducing the eighteen foot depth of the parking spaces to, to work in this area a little bit. But I think we sort of vetted that at our la- our previous two meetings with. Um, the eighteen feet was, didn't, shouldn't be reduced any further. Uh, and we, as I mentioned, we did increase the, uh, conduits underneath all of the parking areas that are above the building. So the north, south and west parking. Um, all have conduit availability for, uh, EV spaces. Um, Matt, if you could go to the next slide. Um, we have made, this is sort of a, a, a list of our waivers that we had already submitted, so the first five. I think we talked about it at our previous September meeting, um. Obviously, we're at a hundred and twenty units that has not changed. We're at twenty-five percent of full that has not changed. Um. There was some discussion, if you recall, about, uh, the third party review on the loading area or lack thereof. And what we talked about, um. With this board, your board, was creating a drop-off space, a, um, an Amazon, a mail, a food service, a, um. You know, a DoorDash or an Uber spot that. Would not have someone parking in it, but also wouldn't be your, you know, typical twenty-foot wide bay. So. We're gonna show you a site plan where we allocated one of our parking spot is sort of a dedicated. Quick stop spot, and I'm assuming it's where the Ubers would show up and DoorDash would show up, et cetera, for the residents. Um, but we'll show that on the plan. Uh, number three, we'd already talked about that, that was the parking lot, parking space size. Uh, number four, it's just a little semantics in the way, um, and it was brought up by the third party review. In that. Parking lot trees need to be one for every each spaces, but they need to be within five feet of the spaces themselves. In our particular case, I think it's clear that we have ample parking, uh, I mean ample trees. But in there's a certain couple of instances where we can't specifically meet this requirement because of where the parking is, but. I think the third party indicated that we had plenty of trees on site. We just didn't need this particular requirement. Um, and number five, which we already talked about, was us doing the off-site sewer work to connect that, um, pump station. The Ledgmere Pump Station, um, doing that work, which we have. An estimate from the town, I've added my estimate to that, so it's about a seventy-five thousand dollar, um. Off-site job that we agreed to do. Um. Two new items which we added more. In response to the third party review, because they would show up, um. And need to be sort of, uh, put a bo- put a ball on it, and that was, um, I think. Um, Madam Chairperson, you mentioned it about the snow storage. Obviously, we can store a certain amount, and if we can't, it needs to be trucked off and it needs to be trucked off at our expense. We understand that, but that can be. A waiver or a finding. Um, and in the third party review, and this was discussed a little bit at conservation. Um, under your bylaw, section thirty-three, forty-three dash eight-one, um. For nitrogen removal, uh, pho- total phosphorus and total nitrogen, um. In our type of system, which is a recharge system. You basically can't meet these two requirements. Um, it's sort of a goal, not a requirement per se, if you read the bylaw. Um. And in, in a, you know, you need to, my understanding, and I'm not a, I'm not a. Stormwater guy, but basically, if you have an open basin. You can control total phosphorus and total nitrogen because you're recharging it through. Loom, um, you're essentially giving the medium to absorb the phosphorus and the nitrogen. But when you do ha- when you have a completely contained underground system. Um, you really have no way of removing the phosphorus and the nitrogen, however, our system did pass. The stormwater bylaw, uh, at the Conservation Commission, because this is, the total suspended solids. Uh, exceeds the requirement by far, and we meet peak runoff, we meet volume control, um, and we use the higher, uh, standards for the water, um. That is essentially the, the five-second, five-minute overview of what we've done for the last month. Um, we think we're pretty much, um, there, if you will, we do have this, we, we. Had conversations with Mass DOT about the curb cut, they have all our plans, we paid them the application fee. We're trying to coordinate with them properly because they're coming down the road, they're not gonna be doing the curbs. Near our site, most likely until spring or summer. Um, but they wanted to see our plan to make sure all our electric poles, all our coordination was in, in line, which it is. Um, they've made changes to their electric poles, but it, it works out with, uh, vis a vis where we're putting our curb cuts. Um, so they wanted our curb cut, so they could approve it and potentially when they do the curving out there, uh, in the spring or the summer, they'd be matching. Where we're gonna be anyhow. Um, so happy to take any questions. I know it's late, so I didn't want to get into too much detail, so.
Yeah, I think, um, thank you for, for that summary, um. I think one thing I would want to just see is the updated site plan. I haven't had a chance to look at that yet, that shows the, um. That shows what you were thinking about the drop-off area. Maybe we can just pull the, pull that up, uh, if anyone else has any specific questions like that, um. Please, uh, have them in mind. I just need to grab my folder.
Um, it's hard to see, but you'll see, uh, uh, in the wood nerf, on the upper right of, uh, in the front of the building, there's a D. Marked in one of the parking spaces. Matt, if you could cursor that a little bit. Um, and we designate as a drop-off spot and we put it in our notes on the plan and we'll put signage there to that effect. Um, so it's sort of, that's the main entrance to. The residential space. Now it's probably not where the residence is gonna go, because it's not where the parking is. So there'll be another entrance over by the handicap spots into the lobby as well, um. But. We also figured that, that we really didn't want someone to leave a car right there on a regular basis overnight and. Maybe it's parked the same car for weeks on end, if it's not moved, so it's sort of a transitional spot. Um, I don't see anyone staying there very long, but it would be where someone would get picked up, where food would get picked dropped off, that sort of thing.
Is that spot big enough, or like, when I think about like an Amazon van or UPS or whatever coming in there, it looks like a normal car spot.
It is a normal spot, but it's near that, um, remember, there's no curving here, so it's near that walkway, so it's really more like twenty-four feet deep. Um. I, so I think it's, it's. Would it? Would probably handle any size Amazon van, a UPS van, any size car, it wouldn't handle a delivery truck per se. I don't, you know, I think it's more than adequate for, for that.
I think, Tricia, one, one of the things that I remember that conversation, because I think I asked the question, I, I, I think, well, having that, that parking spot, that, that kind of transient. Parking spot makes sense to me, but one of the concerns that, that, that I had raised, and I think that's where, where we had a conversation was. The volume and the, um. The, the, the continuity of having deliver, uh, moving trucks based on turn, um, on, on turnaround of residents. And I think we had talked that on the back of the building, there would be a place where a truck could. Park and w- w- without having, uh, a bunch of trucks every week. This is from the street, uh. Did I just remember that?
Well, what we talked about is we put a condition, uh, we're happy with it, uh, because. Depending on where you live in the building, you'd probably move in a different spots. So we would have all move-ins coordinated through the management. And they would actually tone off, if you're moving to. A unit in the south wing, you'd want to bring your, you, and you lived on the first or second floor, most likely you're coming in the south entrance, so. I think we thought about the resident move-in is more of a management control, only handled from the north, south or west parking lots. Um, and, you know, that's how we handled it.
So are, are you gonna cordon off some parking lots for the truck to, 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 to park there while they take the furniture out without blocking the traffic or blocking the filing?
I don't think they would. It would have to be a tractor trailer, even a, even a regular, um, moving van, um. These are nine hundred to a thousand square foot units, so they don't really have big spots, but. Um, and every spot has a, has a five-foot, um, wo- walkway adjacent to it, if you will, so. What we envisioned was that the management would block off a couple of spaces on a day they knew they had move-ins, depending on. What part of the building those folks were coming in and out of. And they, they would control that.
Okay, so he's not gonna be a driver with a U-Haul truck, willy-nilly thing and just put it in right there and start moving things out?
No, everything, it, it has, even management, I mean, management has to control. Regardless, they have to control moving and move out, because they put pads on the elevator and. You know, all that sort of thing, so. It'd have to be controlled through the management. We would want it, no matter what, we would want it controlled through the management.
Yeah, I mean, I'm. I understood when you were, when you had explained at the time about, um, you know, when I. To move in places when I rented as well, it's like you want to be the closest door. To the elevator you want to use to make the trip as short as possible, so, um. So it makes sense to me that that kind of location, there's a set of locations where. At the entrances, I guess for the first floor units, it's, could be all around the building, um. So that part, so that part makes, you know, makes okay sense to me, um. I'm, I'm unsure about the. About the delivery. It'd be nice to maybe put. Um. You know, put a vehicle in that spot, typical, you know, the typical Amazon van or UPS truck, those are the, those are the deliveries that are in my cul-de-sac every day. Um, to see just how they would, you know, how they would negotiate that. I'm, I'm just not sure, I don't, I'm not sure of just a single parking space is what. Um, I don't know, I'm not sure I'm buying that, that that would work. So, um, but I think these are just little issues that we can. You know, make sure we take a closer look at. Um, what else jumps out to people is what we need, what we need to look closer at on this project.
Um, I think, I think we probably should not ignore the bus stop and there's, I guess this one thing is. Um, the MWR TA bus, we, we kind of know what they require, but also, um. So we're bringing more traffic to Route one twenty-six. And then we're gonna have no way, um, you're just gonna stop traffic with the school bus, everything. And children are gonna be out. I live off of that, it's a pretty busy road, and I, I feel like we shouldn't probably just ignore that. Um, or maybe it is okay to ignore it, we, because we're not school department, but I, I think we should at least talk about it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think those are. I, I don't think those two statements really go together, but, um. But I think the thing we discussed with the school bus, uh, you know, it's nice if there's an area to pull off, but everyone has to stop anyway. Right? And obviously the kids never go. You know, they would be coming. Right from. You know, potentially the, the, the canopy area that we made. Yep, yeah, across the sidewalk directly into the bus door. Um, and wouldn't be crossing any kind of traffic and all traffic has to stop anyway, um. No matter how busy the road is, um, no matter how many lanes there are. So, um, so it's kind of a. Uh, you know, a, a point that way, but I, I don't know about the, um, MWR TA bus, you know, um. It's a little tricky having. A big, um. You know, someplace large to pull in, I mean. I, I don't know if. The, if they go into, or they would go into a lot like this to pick up passengers, I don't know. How they operate, it seems like coming in this. I'm picturing that, that space, um, at, uh, the. The Bark- the Barclay, Berkeley project, um. But a space like that.
I think that's what they have, yeah.
Yeah. Luckily, but it coming into this. This space would kind of cut off. Wouldn't be cutting off like the bike lanes and the pedestrian sidewalks and all the things that we were adding to Pon Street to. Encourage the pedestrian traffic? How would that work, you know, um?
It's a great question, you know, and, and I believe the last bus, I, I think the last, the, uh, bus is, I believe, at the Shaw's Plaza, et cetera, keep.
I think so right now, but my, I mean, I, we are gonna, I think, try to have them come to our meetings to. Kind of get our, on the best way to work with them, but I think. I mean, the general sense of conversation was we should be probably trying to plan for public transportation infrastructure. Since it's substantially cheaper to build it than go back and put it in later.
Yeah, I think the thing with the, um, it, it, I, I agree with that, it, it's. Yeah, I think the thing with the um, it it I I agree with that. It it seems like it's a bigger um. Question, you know, like on the um, they said on the Buckley, there was already a stop there. It was already designated as a stop. You know, I don't know if they already had a pull in. Um, in in that area. So, um. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how that, you know, where that would best happen even along this. You know, along along in this area somewhere.
Well, if I. If I could, I'm not sure they're going to relocate out of Shaw's anytime soon because it's probably a. High demand to drop off at that plaza. And with the easement that was put upon this lot for the pond street work. You know, essentially the first fifteen feet in on the front of this lot is under an easement to the town. Um, and. I don't think anyone's gonna be changing the curb location. So. In about six to eight months, that whole street line is established and it's got nothing to do with me. You know, it's not like I can change the curving that they're doing. They're actually doing the radiuses coming in. So. Now you're talking, now you're talking about, okay, we have to start thinking about something inside the project. Um, I just don't think they'll they'll have any desire to be come inside the project when they're at Shaw's, which has gotta be a. A a high destination. A lot of people getting dropped off and picked up. So.
But I mean, that's just something I don't understand like about the um, about the way that I've never taken that. MW RTA myself. And so I don't understand even how far apart do they have stops? Like it's obviously it's a. Lot further than the the bus stop, you know, because they'll make sure the kids walk the shortest distance possible. Um, city blocks obviously go quite a ways. A city bus, like a Boston bus, right, which I have taken, but. So I don't know how, yeah, how frequently they put stops. That would be um. Interesting information to have to to start our discussion or just having a map that marks where they are around. Um, you know, around Ashland. Um, but I agree, people coming out with their groceries, that's what they. You know, that's that's where they wanna be or where they wanna go. So, okay, so we have. Maybe just some questions about about bus, about continued about. A delivery drop off, Amazon, that type of thing. Um, not sure that's fully resolved yet. What else is on? What else is on that list for people? Might be kind of jogging our memories here.
Um, this, I think, is not for the applicants so much as um us, but there was a. On the GCG review, I think it was. Uh, legal about that easement. So what the memo that Lisa made did issue was saying it could be counted in the um. She felt it could be counted in the square foot, you know, what could be buildable, but there was another question about saying now that you're you're sort of claiming it. Um, did did the uh that party give a release? So I'm translating. That was months ago, but that's the intent. I don't think. I have not seen a a updated memo about that. Um, I could have missed it.
I I don't think I have either, Peter. Do you know like what what the status of that is, what happened? Um.
Well, in my recollection, when that that kind of became a moot point, obviously Lisa reviewed it. Uh, it's a it's a it's a way that's. But it was laid out. Uh, and it is under the ownership of the of of trash development, and so therefore they can. Um, they can, they can count that land. Uh, in 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 their overall unit, you know, in their all, they're in their overall total account. Uh, regarding our release, I think what we are concerned with what that goes to is the easement. That is upon the with with that goes with the Putzamore property. And and that's a legal, that's an easement really that has nothing to do with the town in my eyes. That is between Putzamore and obviously Trash Development, who would become the owner of this property. Um, that's where we kind of left it. Uh, that's where we left it after.
Right? Is that, that's not the way I recall the GCG memo, I guess. So I I will go back and read it and send you something.
The GCG memo always makes note that it's a legal issue and, you know, council should be there, you know, it it up the. Council, you know, council, legal advisor.
Yeah, and that was, I don't think she answered that part of it. She answered part of it about. Using this word footage, but I do not believe, I believe there's at least one open issue about ownership.
Yeah, unless there was a second memo, the last one I saw from Lisa, she had questions for the applicants still. I speak to this issue.
We have town council. We have our council here.
Okay, sure.
Uh, going back a couple of hearings, I uh presented a legal analysis of the easement issue, if you will, because I had conducted title on the property. And I presented that information to both Peter and Lisa. Uh, you're correct, there were two issues relative to Converse Way, if you will. One was the calculation of the area on Converse Way and what can be included in the area calculation of the lot. And the second was the legal implications of the easement. Um, and I opined based on my title review that uh we are within our rights uh uh in connection with the development as you see it. And we have preserved the easement access. Uh, to the adjoining lot owner, and that's shown on the plan as well. So I believe uh to Peter's point, um, it is a legal easement title issue. I've looked at it. I've presented that information to your town council. I believe the GCG memo has been updated. Um, there were actually two drafts that came out this week. I asked Peter to have them refine that based on Lisa's review of the project to date, and I believe all of those issues relative to Congress were now shown as. Having been addressed.
So Peter, that just sounds like a question to you. It's like the board, maybe uh maybe maybe the issue is just. Done, Lisa's reviewed it, it's clear, but I'm not sure that has been clearly transmitted. You know, from Lisa to to the planning board members so that we know that that's just. That they're that applicant is well within their rights to not only. Um, use it in the square footage, but also use it as they're doing. So I think if maybe we. Maybe that documentation by Lisa is out there and or maybe it needs to just be written up in an in email or or whatever so that we can see it.
I know I can work with Lisa on that. I think the number one thing is that as that letter came out, um. You know, GCG wasn't aware that Lisa me, you know, obviously we in in attorney Colback was, you know, present when we kinda. Crossed out the, we we talked about the the public way and the paper way, and so I updated GCG on on that note. But I I am happy to circle back and work with Lisa to to make to make it clear inconscise for the board, uh, that those two matters for. For 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 it's all.
Yeah, like I said, if the documentation is out there, if it just needs to be put together in a simple memo so that so that that. Point can be kind of checked off the list if that's where it is. So, um.
I can do that.
Okay. With the list of.
Yes, somewhat related to that, there's a few items or one or two, at least in the latest GCG. Um, the response is that um. Access or slope grading issues will be coordinated with with the butter. Um, is that, does that wind up in legal writing somewhere? So they should put some more ever sell, you know. That uh somebody else is gonna then have a a non-conforming handicap ramp to their site.
So is that current, and and so. I I did see that in the report, you know, I think from I I thought it was that coming from a different angle of topography, but um. Ben, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, um, there's a couple of items and um GCG had talked a little bit about the uh grade transition at the first entrance coming in, both.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the handicap and the roadway where um meeting the exact grades on the butter's property, it's it's a little. Um, not steep per se, but GCG had a concern about maybe a larger vehicle. Or a very low vehicle might bottom out a little bit because of the angle. Um, so we um talked a little bit about if we had the right to um. Go onto the neighbor's property five or ten feet, we would we would sort of regrade the slope. Between the two driveways. We wanted to confirm that was an acceptable solution both for GCG and. Um, this board and then we've had conversations with this butter in the past. We'll have another one with him. To confirm that's not an issue. Um, the second issue is, I think GCG pointed out that. In essence, we're providing a parking, we're providing a sidewalk to. A a person's property and we probably should, although it makes sense and we know it's something they want. Um, we need to get clearance that they're 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 okay with that. Um, there are some semantics, if you will, with the ADA requirements because that. Walking that sidewalk near the front entrance of the property cannot be made ADA compliant. It's just way too steep. That's why we show stairs. Um, and we've talked to the ADA board about the fact that we have a secondary sidewalk in the back that can be ADA compliant. Uh, would that be acceptable and? And and you will. Unfortunately, if they don't allow it, then we can't do any sidewalks to the property because we can't provide a sidewalk. We can't do any sidewalk unless we can do one um that's that's acceptable to ADA. So. Um, we've we kind of see that as an as a next step during the site process. I mean, after the permit's been issued. Um, to file with the ADA board, and I don't think it's a major issue considering. There's just no physical way we could put a sidewalk, a ADA sidewalk uh between the two properties at that front entrance. Um, but it's not something we can answer right now, quite honestly.
Okay, and and just because I don't have the easement right in front of me, does the easement call for a sidewalk?
No, that's something we talked about with the with this board, um, about some linkage. I mean, they have a they have a mini golf and ice cream shop. Um, we have residents, so we're sort of creating that linkage. Not from ADA standpoint, but strictly from the, it makes sense both for the project and for the town. Um, and I know our neighbor wanted that or would like that. Uh, we just have to kind of get over that. Hurdle with the design on on that. That's separate from the. Little bit of grading issue on that front entrance for the cars getting in and out.
Well, what did you, what were you saying that the that the neighbors want? The the sidewalks, the connecting side?
They like the linkage between the two properties. So they they're happy with this because they see it as a more clients.
Okay, comes people coming over for ice cream.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, what what is the process within the Massachusetts uh Architectural Access Board? Uh, is 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 there a, are you gonna submit a set of drawings? I mean, chances are they're usually very thorough and 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 they will, they. They, from my experience, they they might accept if there's a a true impossibility to say to to fix the grades here. That they have the 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 other entrance in the back as as the accessible route. Uh, but but they may not, you know, uh, what what what's the status of that process?
Um, we haven't filed it yet because we wanted to make sure we were sort of through on-site design first. I think. What it would mean is we'd probably have to, if they didn't accept it, we'd have to eliminate the front entrance. Because the building, the snack shack, the way to get into the to the mini golf. Is actually near the rear.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're not, there's no distance difference. You actually are probably safer walking. Along our our building and using the back walkway. So all we see what would happen is we would have to eliminate the front sidewalk.
Yeah, and and your handicap spaces usually want to be close to the entrance anyways.
Right there.
By the sign, unless they would want you to put one of those on the back. So that a person can park there and then go in a wheelchair to have some ice cream. I don't know.
That probably will be a catch because you're all your accessible parking is right up front. So the opportunity for somebody in a wheelchair. You have quite a distance of travel. So I guess your solution could be providing one of the spots at the back near the entry instead of creating a ramp to adjust the height.
The thing is that if people are actually coming to go get ice cream, they are going to park over. On the other property, you know, to get their ice cream versus parking on on this lot and going that way.
This would be primarily for a resident that's in a wheelchair in this building to say, I wanna just go for an ice cream. And I guess I guess they will be the ones who use it.
Yeah. So. Yeah, so what I guess would, I mean, it would be a good step, I I think, to um. You know, to work through that, like if if the walkway, say the walkway and the the accessible walkway, I guess it's one in the same, you know, would be, you know, does it work? Does it does you, you know, do you have, you have a plan B. It works definitely, you know, um. Before we, you know, it to doing doing it after the fact seems like seems strange versus just going through the exercise now.
Um, and. My only concern was I'm not familiar and I'm I'm not an expert on this, so I don't know whether this is a three to. Five-week discussion or this is a three to five-month discussion. Um, and if it's.
With ADA or just with?
Yeah, yeah.
They're they're usually pretty thorough and 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 what when when I've uh. Put like claims in front of them, um, they, once they give them the information, I think, and probably in 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 two. In two meetings, you'll get an answer. That that would be my guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
But 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 I think you have to give them a really complete, like a full set of information and they really review it carefully.
And you know, I don't know if this is his um in his uh jurisdiction. But um Roy Carreras cousin, David, is one of the. Guys that goes out to sites and um and evaluates things like that. I'm I'm not sure at what scale, but he might. Be um. Someone to talk to. I've worked with him recently, um, in the past couple, past year.
We can follow up.
Yeah, just someone fairly local that, you know, um. I'm not sure if he lives in Ashland, but uh. But some might be a resource at 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 least to to get that process, you know, moving, um, just to to get an answer, I think. Not have something hanging out there to be decided later.
Yeah.
Um. All right, anything else that jumps out to people? Previous questions you had that haven't been answered to your satisfaction? I I think the next step on this then, though there's there there are these remaining questions that we have. Noted, there's and and other things that I I wanna review um as well too. Now that we've got the GCG report yet, I haven't had a chance to go through that myself. Um, to make sure again, everything has been covered, but I think. It's at a point where we start that process of putting the documentation together before. If our questions are the are, the number of questions we have are getting fewer and fewer, it's it's time to start putting that documentation together to see if. Any other questions pop up in that process that we want to address. So um, so Peter, I think um. That we should be starting to put together the the list, the the conditions, the criteria. Um, in order to start to have our, um, like I said, to kind of take care of crossing the. Starting in the eyes. Um, any question they have, same way of working through Hundred Chestnut Street. Um, documenting, so I, um, I think and I'd be interested to hear the view of the board that we're ready to kind of start that process.
I agree we are personally, I mean, we we've debated just about everything in this project, I'm not sure there's a whole lot left.
Okay. Kevin, is that your sense as well?
Uh, I think I'd like to see the the last, if there is another G C Z, G C G closeout here, because this this last one. Is just their response to two sets of G C G comments, so hopefully that's been circled back through them.
Yeah, and to say to that, I'm I'm, G C G is, you know, there was a response from. Um, the applicants engineer to G C G that I think Ben you said over today. That still has to go back to G C G, so we're still in this, we're still in a period where it's gonna be turned back around one more time.
Yeah, yeah, I just think.
It's still ten pages, so it'd be good to see it down to to two before we. Yeah, far ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, definitely, I think I think sometimes, especially like I said, going through. For a project the size like a Hundred Chestnut Street, it'd almost be easier if we can start to keep track of things. In the document versus all of these documents everywhere is um. You know, and start to build the documents that we, when we see a condition that pops up in the G C G report, immediately it gets put. Into the conditions we're talking about, um, instead of trying to gather it all up at the end, which was. Difficult and time consuming, so so it's kind of a working document, you know, that that we're creating, um, so.
What's uh, I my, you know, we will take a stab at that in the office and and obviously there's a couple items that we need to follow up on, obviously. Uh, Ben, from from my standpoint, I have to send that response back to G C G. Even though I think Mike Carter was C C'd on it, so it's already kind of back in the report. Uh, so I thank you, Ben and Matt for that one, um, better than that, I'm happy to introduce you to Roy Carrera's cousin. Andrew Carrera, if you're looking to find somebody uh to answer questions, but you you're access uh, your accessible areas.
Great, thank you.
All right, and then so I think um. For next time, obviously, we'll start, we'll be still answering these questions, I think we'll need to. Um, go through the G C G report in the same kind of detailed way that that we we did for Hundred Chestnut Street. And make sure we, all the things, obviously, some of the mechan- the mechanical things are beyond the scope of the board. Um, the knowledge of the board, but things that um that do uh. You know, are about bigger issues or things that we should, we should be aware of as as they move forward, so we might want to go through that document, we want to go through the design review document, make sure everything is covered there. And like I said, when when appropriate, the things that are in either of those documents should then be, you know, um, in the conditions. So to make sure that those, all those thoughts are covered, so. Um. So where does that put us upon the?
That puts us out to November tenth in my eyes, I think at the next meeting, we are to have a hundred, uh, excuse me, we have uh. On the twenty seventh, we are going to come back with um ten to sixty Main Street. And also we have three ninety nine Union Street, which is Starbucks, uh, and then we will also be going back. Decision regarding um. Building Americas, uh, are the big three items on that case. Uh, and then, uh, however, we wanna have a quick update for a couple minutes, I think we can also do that. I just don't think we can, we can spend too much time uh on on this case at the next agenda.
Yeah, so I want to make sure we get through the, you know, that the G C G has time to, but, you know, like you were saying, for it to get. That there really aren't, isn't that many points for us to be waiting on, um. Sorry, was someone commenting?
Could could I ask, do we stay on for October? We're we're hitting a major deadline. Um, and quite honestly, there's only two things in the G C G report and they're they're, there are scribbler notes at best, um, they're. An inverted number on a on a yard drain, um, they're not functional design at all. Um, so we're gonna, we sent them right back, hopefully that we we, it just got missed, so beyond what we talked about tonight, there is. Uh, I mean, I know, I I respect the fact that we have to kind of go through the final report. But my guess is in a week, we're gonna have a report that beyond the five or six things we've already mentioned, there's nothing else in the G C G report, and we're happy. You know, uh, uh, we're happy to to start working on a draft with Peter, um, so you, so at least we can put everything into that draft, as you mentioned. Um, but I think if we, if you took a good lot, long, hard look at the G C G report, it's down to just about nothing. Um, other than the five or the four or five things we just talked about, so I'd I'd really appreciate it if we could. Uh, I think you're only meeting once in November and once in December, is that what I what I see, so I I. I I really respectfully ask if I can stay on that other October meeting.
I think it's okay to stay on that October meeting, but it's gonna be short, I think they're all gonna be short, we just, there's just, you know, there there's just too much on our plate. So um, but I think we can at least. Know where things are and then have the longer, you know, the longer time on the tenth. Which will already be shortened because we have another issue we have to handle on the tenth. So um, but uh, but to to keep the, to keep the process moving, and I think Peter has a good. We have a a very strong base for those. For the conditions and um and the criteria, so I I I'm not sure you need assistance with that. Peter, am I right?
No, the only assistance I would ask at this point is to 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 for for. To really put together help, but you know, I'm gonna put a li- uh, together a list of documents and I just want to make sure they're current and they're up to date, obviously. Especially when it comes down to the list of documents that architect for landings. Um, and the site plans, uh, and to make sure that that if you could do that. And also include, you know, stormwater management, I know you're on your third amendment to stormwater management. Uh, but I also just would have read the first and second amendment, um, and then from there on, uh, whether elements of documents have been submitted. Uh, would be great uh help, as we can kind of cross reference what I have in our possession with the latest, the greatest. Uh, that you've been submitting the last few months.
All right, so we'll put it on for a a check-in. On the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, yeah.
Um. Yeah, just coming into hard time of year, um. And make a motion to continue the hearing to October twenty seventh. Take a second. All right, and a roll call vote?
Deepa, good day.
Marcelo, I.
Arthur, Jersey, I.
I'm Macleana.
And Tricia Kendall, I, so we are going to October twenty seventh on that and um. And in the meantime, we'll start to get the the documents in order. Plus any outstanding, plus the outstanding issues, the questions brought up by the board.
I'm gonna follow up with counsel uh on the. Easement, parking, all that stuff.
Okay, yep, sounds good, I mean, it sounds like a lot has happened in the. In the last month behind the scenes when, you know, so um, it's kind of taken a a jump forward if those documents are are coming together, so. All right, so we will see you on the twenty seventh. All right, so we just have to go through a couple continuances here, um. Two twenty five Pond Street, special permit and.
Do you want to call Anna back?
Oh, yes, sorry, yeah.
Thank you, Deepa. Do you want to go through the continuance?
I guess we can until I should come back on. So um. Yeah, the special permit and site plan review for McDonald's, they're just, they just requested another continuance, right?
Yeah, so they're still working and they're going through, they're going back and forth with the owner of the site, I believe, and so um. They were, they, excuse me, they did a continuance from their last meeting with design review, initially, uh, they received. Uh, a continuance with design review and then they received, then they asked for a quick continuance with plenty of work.
Okay, they're working some stuff out to see what they can do based on design reviews uh requests, probably. All right, so I'll make a motion to continue, we need to continue this. Out there then, where can we continue this to?
I would say November tenth.
Okay. We can, I'll make a motion to continue the two twenty five Pond Street special permit and site plan review until December, or sorry, November tenth. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Going to die.
Marcelo, I.
Arthur, Jersey, I.
You're on, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm Macleana.
And Tricia Kendall, so that is continued. Item E, scenic road application, this is just something you keep kicking down the road, is that right, Peter?
Yeah, it is, when I get time to kind of, you know, obviously, I I'm working with D P W on this one, and so until I have a. The planning board had a bunch of questions at the last application about it, and so until, I think I have time to to answer those questions and uh. We can move some things off of our agenda, it makes sense to kind of put this off a little bit, there's no urgent matters, I know there's 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 trees that, you know. Um, that there there's no um, there's no trees at the D B W, you know, the tree ward, or feel that are in dire uh. In dire need of removal at this point.
Okay, so do you want to move it to November tenth or push it out to December?
I would say the first meeting is December, and I can pull off the agenda.
Yeah, which is what, December?
That's gonna be December, and actually, that was another point at the meeting, uh, we sent that with the email, uh, last, about probably two weeks ago. Right now, we only have one meeting scheduled in December and then December eighth.
Yeah, so we were gonna look at that, can we just say, do we have to have a date or can we just say the first meeting in December?
I'm gonna say the first meeting is December.
Okay. Um, I will make a motion to continue the scenic road application uh to the first meeting in December, whatever date that shall be. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa, we can die.
Marcelo, I.
Arthur, Jersey, I.
I'm Macleana.
And Tricia Kendall, I, so we continue that, any word from Anna?
Uh, no, I do not have any word from Anna, you know what? Anna also, you know, on the on the sidebar, Anna said she was traveling and she was getting on a train. So she looks like we join us via phone, and so I am waiting for her a phone to come up in the uh, the participation box.
Oh, okay.
So I am, I texted her and uh. That's the best I, that's what I've done.
Well, I don't think there's anything, in the planning topics, I don't think there's anything um that has. Progressed in those first four A B C planning topics, correct? Thing from, nothing new from last time.
No, nothing new from last time.
Nothing new from last time.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Design Review Committee, I'm just looking at reports from board board members and town planners, gonna wait for. Um, gonna write for Anna for Sustainability Committee, but I think everyone received the checklist from Sustainability Committee, so we'll obviously be looking at that more closely. Down the road, if Anna has anything else to jump in, um, when she comes back, she can. Design Review Committee, obviously, we're trying to make sure that stays populated and to find um additional good candidates for that board. Um. Comprehensive plan is the thing, there's nothing on inclusionary zoning, there's nothing on C P C, I don't know if anyone else has anything on other, I know we. Want to get the trail scheduled at some time, um. As soon as we can, um.
We also have Jim Adams coming in on October seventh, under twenty seven.
That's right.
Talk about schools, schools, all that.
So Jim Adams coming to talk about schools.
Mm-hmm.
So um, as you can see, the agenda just gets more and more full. Um, the comprehensive plan was the a time critical thing um on the agenda, um, but I don't think we received. Um, the 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 comprehensive plan letter um that we looked at last time. Um. Again, I don't know if Anna's gonna make it back on.
Just text initially, we jump jumping on shortly.
Okay. Um.
I have a couple things, it'd be not really stalling time, but um, so I I sent Peter and I a bunch of lists of the things. Um, that we keep saying the schedule, so they reply back and some of those are like the Jim Adams that we're talking to, but I do also have, um. I think the the water, we got some on the sewer capacity. Um, but we were gonna talk to um the LA board and then the sewer moratorium, I think, um. What I want to make sure is if the planning board should have. Any responsibilities during that six-month moratorium to do some investigation, um, because we've burned through our month, right? And I I just want to make sure we, it it's a difficult situation, I appreciate the town stepping up, so I feel like we have to make sure we're covering anything that we should be doing wrong with that.
Um, yeah, I don't know if we've been asked to do anything in regard to that, like if, that's. Is that what you're asking, Kate, if we should be, I don't know.
Well, it it, yeah, I mean, we're, it's, we're the planning department and it overlaps with. Approval of projects is their capacity and those kind of things, so it's. Maybe none of our business and and we don't have to care, but maybe it is our business when it keeps coming up with our projects.
Yeah, no, so I'm asking is, are you saying that we reach out to Michael and say, hey, is there anything the planning board should be doing to help you with this?
I, yeah, I think.
Or are you saying, I'm gonna dig deep into the bylaws and or whatever and have some proposals to make to the planning board about things that may affect this, like?
Um, I think we should start with, I guess, the, I'm assuming Peter talks to Michael, but I think. What what I'm concerned about is, again, we've done a month and we have a moratorium, but how are we, what are we? What's the plan to use that like productively?
Well, you see right now, the there is a study going on, I think a professional. Study that that's being commissioned to to assess the engineering of it. That will have a report before the moratorium ends, is that right, Peter?
That is correct, so right now, Haley and Board are 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 consultants for the sewer. Um, we are studying data, right, and we're looking at data and to see how much sewer is coming in. Through those three pump stations and where it's getting pumped to, and we're a go. The biggest thing is right now is, we uh, you know, we we turned one valve in, or, you know, we're now putting, you know, more. Flow along through Pond Street, through the through the Ledgeman Station, through the Bracket Road Station. And we're taking some pressure off of the the Chestnut Street Station, but with that said, I think we are also looking at the I N I and the flows, and especially when it comes out to these storm events. Such as tonight, you know, I think, uh, I don't know if it's, I know it was really gonna get windy and rainy tonight. Uh, and uh, those are the big events that we're looking for and to 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 measure capacity, flow, and how much capacity we can pump.
So I think the question is, the question is, that's what they're doing, right? It's their job, none of us are sewer experts, none of us know how to accumulate that data. But is there something we should be doing, so for instance, just throwing this out there, so for instance, should we? Get the education in over the next month about how these things work, as as you had. Said Kate, that we had had intended to have this kind of educational thing. Thus, we might have some questions to add to the investigation going on? Is that what we're looking to do? I mean, I don't see, I'm not sure, but I don't see any of us doing.
I would say, right, but also, I mean, is like the the pending approval of apartments, right, those kind of things are. Um. Do we have any responsibility of passing on information of that, I mean, that that? That kind of thing, so if there's.
Those a hundred and twenty apartments coming online on Pond Street times whatever, I mean, how does that?
Does that wait till the moratorium and then we evaluate that and that's fine, um?
Well, those those shoot projects, though, unless we don't trust the information that's been given to us by um. by um, Ron Mueller and associates, they've already said that there's capacity for these two projects. But they wanted to cut it off after that so that they can look at some of those considerations more. So that's data we already have.
So the ones that are proposed, um, that are not gonna be into the moratorium. I, I guess, I mean, I'm fine if it's handled, I, what I don't wanna do is like, oh, I wish the planning board had told us or done something, cause that, that's what I, I'm.
Are we telling them, who are we telling?
Um, we, we have generally heard that sometimes there isn't good communication between boards, so that's what I'm trying to flush out. Is there anything that we should be asking, supporting, doing about the moratorium? As a planning board?
Yeah, I guess I don't know, uh, like, my, my answer is like, I have no idea, besides like educating ourselves, so Peter.
I, I have met with DPW and Michael and, and our, and our consultants. And we've gone through, you know, how much, you know, and we forecasted all development pressures out and so as, as a town planner, I've, I've done my job, I believe, and I've tried to do the best to get information that I see coming in to the consultant, to the factor and how much flow and, and what the capacity would be. I think right now, the goal is to see what the system is, is handling, what the, what the strengths are, what the weaknesses are and what the capacity limits and levels are, um.
You don't, I don't think she's talking about that kind of data Peter, I think she's talking, you know.
No, I think, I think that covers all, but like, we, we know there's potentially something at Shaw's, I, I have no idea how many units, right? You know, there's potentially something yet, um, near across very green. Um, and maybe those are past the moratorium and it doesn't matter either, I just wanted to make sure we're trying to cover all the bases.
Are, are you saying, I, I'm just not sure what you're saying, I don't know if you're saying that are these projects, are these applicants aware that there's a sewer moratorium?
No, I, I'm saying, should we, do they need to be included in, in calculations and discussions and studies during the moratorium?
Oh, I think they, I think they're already, probably are, I think that's one of the reasons the moratorium went into effect. Is because those projects, I mean, they've already applied.
I don't think the um, Shaw, I don't know if Shaw's applied, I guess.
They have applied. Um, Peter sent out that email, that they have applied their first application. Peter rejected because it was incomplete, but apparently now they have, they have reapplied, is that right Peter?
They have resubmitted material which is under review.
Right, right, so. Um. So yeah, I mean, I think uh, I think that, that, that's one of the reasons the moratorium, my understanding is why they're doing it now, because they know about those big projects and wanna figure it out. So, um, so I'm just, I'm just gonna be clear about what you're asking so that we can go down that path. Um, but unless it's clear, I'm just not sure what.
Well, it sounds like the study that we're getting is, is part of that whole capacity that we've asked, capacity of water and sewer. Um, on, related to many projects, so it sounds like that will cover, cover that then, at least the sewer part.
Okay, and, and.
I, and, and Trisha, I apologize, I joined a little bit late, I was having some technical issues. Can I just be reminded what the agenda item is, because I, I had a comment, but I wanna make sure I'm covering the proper.
We, we were just, we were just talking about, you know, other speakers that we want to uh, have come in in all of our spare time. Like Jim Adams, we wanted to talk about trails, we wanted the sewer to come in and understand more about how that works. Um, today, we would have maybe had Jim Adams come in, but Michael needed to come in to talk about this other moratorium. So um, so yeah, so we're just kind of talking about these other, and so, and so we're kind of really talking about the sewer, understand that, so.
The only thing I would, I would add that, that might go to Kate's point is, you know, and I think we can certainly do this as individual planning board members as well, connecting with Peter and Emma to better understand the zoning and bylaws in Ashland, because we do have the ability as a planning board to evaluate that as we think about how to address the moratorium or how to develop Ashland, right, and so I, I think there would be some benefit to individual work of planning board members to familiarize ourselves with zoning areas of town and what development actually means. Um, and perhaps we can do a, a retreat to discuss are there ways for us to, to rezone or rethink how Ashland is owned to prevent these, these problems in the future?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think it all goes back to the comprehensive plan, right? I don't see us rezoning until we understand the comprehensive plan. Which is why we were doing all this other stuff, cause you weren't on Anna, so we didn't wanna talk about comprehensive plan. So um, but now that you are on, I think it, it does get back to that. And um, so the select board met last night, I was on for part of it. They were looking at the letter, the last version of the letter, um, that everyone received, that we tried to really clarify. Cause the letter we got frankly wasn't very clear, um, so I tried to, Anna and I tried to clarify it, get it to a point where, um, y- you know, we, oh, hopefully we didn't lose her again. Um, was something we could pass back to the select board, so I think that was all set out. The select board were talking about it last night, I know they had a couple of little tweaks to it, um. One of them was, like, instead of four members of the public, they were suggesting six, one from each voting district, ideally. Um, I don't know how it was worded in the end. Um. I can't, I think other things were just little tweaks, I can't even quite recall what they were, I didn't hear the whole discussion. I expected to get that letter back to Dave and get it out. I expect, I expected them to make the changes and, and get it out to the planning board today so that we could discuss it tonight, that did not happen. So um, but I do know what they were looking for us to maybe attend, or however many could attend their next meeting on on when, uh, twenty-sixth with that, yeah, must be twenty-sixth.
We done the twenty-sixth, they're gonna.
So that they would put us, you know, Brandy talked about putting us first on the agenda to just hopefully, you know, we gotta get this document, we got, we gotta get this document. And we can, they can still ask for money, you know, at town meeting, but we, we just need to get through this and not, um, I think get caught up on too small of issues so that this thing can move forward, um. So, but anyway, I, I think that's what's gonna happen, that they're gonna put us on the twenty-sixth, their meeting on the twenty-sixth. We should get the document well before that, but I don't know what, if we have, we don't have an opportunity to discuss it really before then, cause our meeting's on the twenty-seventh. So, that's as much as I know about that.
I mean, I, I have no problem being there on the twenty-sixth, I don't know if others can attend. And if we're gonna have the majority of the planning board there, then we're posting it as a joint meeting or whatever. In theory, the planning board can have some discussion as well.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I mean, I, I think the changes, I think the changes were minor, but um, I don't have it in front of me, so. Um. Alright, so that's, that's as much as I know about it.
I, I do wanna comment that, I mean, I, I think that it's great that there's an ongoing effort and I'm, I'm optimistic that our discussions with the select board will lead to a process that works. But I, you know, I, I definitely think we need to continue to think about, um, you know, the comprehensive plan process take a long time. And if we have a development moratorium in, in our town, we should, we should still continue to plan as a community. Um, and I think the planning board does have some responsibility to think about our role relative to the moratorium, so I, I like where Kate is going with that and and I think we should come, come back to this discussion, because I wouldn't wanna keep waiting for the perfect process and spend months and months trying to get there and not, not actually di- dig into the substance of the issues.
No, I mean, we have to do that anyway, I think that was the point, that our, our work goes on, no matter what the mor- moratorium does. But um, I think that, that, the, you know, it's, it seems like the meat of that work, if the money comes through at town meeting is gonna be in the comprehensive plan, which relates back to every single issue that we're talking about. So um, I don't see the planning board making issues about changing zoning when the comprehensive plan, the public is going to be meeting about that. So it seems like that would be, uh, kind of against what we are saying we wanna do for the comprehensive plan, so. Um. But uh.
I mean, it's not what we're doing with inclusionaries. I mean, inclusionary zoning, we're continuing as a community to think about, right? So we are still as a community thinking about zoning changes regardless of what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. I, I, I just wanna be careful to, to kind of make it clear, I, I don't necessarily agree with this idea that if we have a comprehensive plan process.
I think we're losing you Anna.
Community or.
I'm, and I'm afraid we can't hear you, we haven't been able to hear you for about the last minute.
It seems, seems to be, the conversation, the last ten minutes, I, I think we're all saying the same thing, I seem to be, I, I'm not sure that we're adding to it. I think there will be a comprehensive plan and we're gonna keep doing the work, right, and there's no, not sure there's any debate on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think you're right, I think there, the two things are gonna happen simultaneously, because they, they just have to, there's, there's no way for us to prevent it. So um, so in any case, that's all I know about comprehensive plan, um, but we do have um, one more thing we need to discuss. Um, that's kind of, those, I, I don't, I don't know if time critical is the right word. Um, but, and this is in regard to future meetings, um, in regard to ten to sixty Main Street. So, um, what, what's being proposed, but, oh Peter, do you wanna briefly explain this?
Yes, uh, sorry, so I'll grab it, I'm sorry, I should have jumped in earlier. So the, uh, after our last meeting with ten sixteen Main Street, the applicant obviously heard from the board and he, um, he had really, and, and he had, and he heard from everyone's ideas and they were great. And so we asked if they could, if, 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 if I and, and, and members of the planning board uh, would be willing to sit down and have a kind of a working meeting uh, with him and his architect to, you know, sit at a round table, pull out, you know, sketch paper. Um, and just kind of go have a brainstorming session about the scale, the buildings um, and the massing, um, and just, you know, have an hour meeting conversation about the, the process, right, and I, you know, and I, and I mentioned this to Trish. Um, and I think uh, Trish had talked to Marcelo about this. Um, and so with that said, um, the applicant is looking to, to sit down with the planning board, have a, a one-hour working meeting. And uh, and just to kind of flesh out ideas, um, face to face, uh, and, and rather be, you know, get off of, of the Zoom process, right? Uh, with that said, I followed up with town council, I, and, and just to make sure that this can happen, right, and, and, and if it happens, it happens in a open, public and fair manner, right? And so with that said, uh, following up the town council, um, number one, many communities do this with developments and with developers. Um, when the board will sit down and have a working meeting with a developer to look at scale, mass and size of architecture. Um, this meeting has to be in town hall and it needs to be open to the public and it needs to be posted, like any typical planning board meeting. And so with that said, um, I have, I, 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 Trish, I have been working with Trish on this one. But we, I would like to propose to develop a meeting, the developer and his architect, Scott Richardson, the developer is Richard Gordon. Um, and any member of the planning board that would be willing to sit down um, and just talk about scale, size and massing to, to really talk about ideas and, and ideally, this needs to happen in town hall, face to face. Um, and uh, and it'll be open to the public, like as I just said, so. Um, that is what the developer is asking uh, for me and the planning board uh, to organize uh, with him.
Yeah, so, so I see this as, obviously, it would need to be open to the public, it would be in-person. Design Review Committee would obviously be invited there as well, um, but it would really be uh, get out trace, get out thick pens, it's not about little details, it's not about traffic, it's not about a number of units, it's about big movements on the site, the first movements designers make as they start to place buildings on the site. And the level, the conversation would be kept at that level, because I think they're wondering, they're, they're getting a sense the, the applicants that, that there's other directions we're looking like, we would like to see. But they seem a little stuck, kind of in getting there. So this is hopefully gonna give them a little push to kind of get out of the scheme that they're in and try some other things, or tell us why those other things can't work. So, very much a um, design charrette on a massing scale, massing model scale. Deepa, very familiar to you, I saw?
I am, I, but I wonder if this is us sitting and talking about concepts versus involving the public, because we don't wanna be sitting and designing this. I don't know, that's, sounds like that's kind of where this is going, I think it's more all about the process, right, to get the public involved in this point and that's where all the conversations have been going, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure whether it's like just planning board, and even though you're opening it out, I don't, I don't know, I'm not convinced on the next steps.
I think the, the fear is that we're gonna go meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting with no real change in the footprint of this building to explore other possibilities. So um, so to, yeah, to kind of jumpstart things and get things going in a different direction, to have them try other possibilities, that was.
I guess, yeah, I guess if it's open to public, I mean, they can also participate in the design charrette, right, so it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there has to be some, I, I'm afraid of it being a free-for-all, right, cause I don't think anything will get done. But it's certainly transparent, right? Marcelo, do you wanna jump in?
Yeah, I, I, I don't see it as a design charrette in the, in the typical sense. Uh, when I hear about this, uh, I think it's, it's almost like a, um, um, a, a good tool to expedite the process to, to, to make sure that, that a, a project that is so fundamental to the downtown of the town uh, really starts kind, it starts on, on a, with the right foot. Uh, as opposed to lingering uh, months per month wi- without really getting the, the, the heart of the project where we feel the town really deserves to have it, especially in such a prominent place. Um, I, 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 I don't think, like a design charrette open to everybody would take us anywhere. That those are usually very difficult to control, and, and I don't think it's it's us designing anything, I mean, they have an architect, I, 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 I think what we want is is to, we, we'll collaborate and, 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 and explore together uh, ideas so that they can take it from there and, and then really, uh, you, you know, develop them and, and, and and, and get to the, to the n- next first meeting with, with to get us all into a little more of a consensus of what's gonna happen at, at that place. And, and how the, 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 the public and private realms, which in, they are very interconnected with with the, 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 the river and what have you, that they just make sense. Uh, I, I, I guess the sense on the last meeting was that there are that, there's, there's a scheme there that, that, that has a lot of things. Um, a good program, but ve- very little engagement with the town per se, so I think just, just a, a jumpstarting that process, that's, that's kind of the way I see it, I, I see it as a positive, as a positive um, 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 outcome and, and and the fact that the public's gonna be able to see it, they see the process, everybody can submit comments and and there will be kind of the jumpstart for the, the beginning of the next meetings, right? The, I, I guess that's the way I see it.
I guess the reason for my this one is, how are they different from all the other applicants that come in front of the design board, right? For example, when we started on Hundred Chestnut, it was such a different story a year ago, but they've come a long way from they've come up, we've kind of given them similar guidelines and then they've come up with ideas. So how is this team, I understand the prominence of this location, but is, is this team, team? is, is this team, team being treated differently than all the other projects that has come in front of the planning board? And how a design has evolved, right? And I'm wondering if getting a wrong precedence for other projects that may come in our pipeline and we said to have these collaboration.
Yeah, I, I see, I see, I see. I, I see what you're saying. I mean, I'll let Peter maybe comment on how other communities have done.
If I could, I mean, if, if I could comment, I, I think like as a, as another planning board member. My, my position on this is that maybe as a planning board, we should be taking more time on projects. The way that we're considering approaching this one and that we are evolving as a planning board. I think we're getting stronger and better at what we do. And to have dedicated time to project is focused on these details, perhaps that's exactly where we should be evolving to. I personally think this would be a great precedent to think about because we are a strong planning board with a lot of technical expertise and broad three sixty views on different elements of planning. So I look at this as a very positive judgment.
And, and, but I, I will just add that the, and, and there's our judgment, right? There, there are projects that, that, that requ- require it more than others. I, I don't see a project that would require it better than this one. But I, I think the other difference that I see, as I understand, and I haven't been part of it, but this, this project has had a public process already with forums, with a bunch of things that, 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 that have had engagement. Uh, and yet we're starting the planning board process in a place where, where, where we failed on the last meeting, that, 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 okay, all those processes took, took place. And now we're getting into, into more, more reality. Uh, and, and yet we, we feel we're not starting in, in, in the best potential starting point. So the, 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 the goal would be to get it there um, together. And, and if, and I, I, I like what Anna's saying and, 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 and I agree with your concern, but why, why is this project different? I, I think the project is different in many ways, but, but that doesn't mean that we, we, we would not do it with others. I, I think that the recent examples have shown that, that there's a little more engagement in that regard, right? And, and, and the projects have reacted uh, thusly. So, so this, I, I don't think there's anything negative that, that's going to come out of it. I think it's the opposite. I, I think the, 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 the process would be more, more, more open for everybody to see how, how, how the project came to be, I guess.
And I mean, I'll also add that some projects are very conventional and they're almost like cut, cut, you know, cookie cut type projects in my mind where we seem to get a lot of very similar design elements and, and sort of the traditional buildings. And this one is quirky and different and far more complex. So to give it one of those different treatments seems actually quite equitable. Giving the proper um reasonable attention to every project based on complexity is actually very fair. And I'm not concerned about issues of equity.
So I, I think um. I mean, like, I guess I just, you know, we need like an informal vote that this is something we want to do because it would be an official would be, it, it, it would be an official meeting. It'd be a public meeting, you know, um. So I don't think I, I guess it would be important to have a quorum there. I'm not sure. We won't be taking any kind of votes, I don't think. Um, so um, so maybe not, but I, I still think it's important to get the general view of the board. Um, can I just see a show of hands? Anna, I won't be able to see yours unless you use the little thing.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I apologize. I'm driving and I.
Yeah, no, no, don't raise your hand.
Yeah, but, so no hands raised here. I wouldn't want to get in trouble. Um, so you know, what I'll say is to me, this is no different from having a public meeting as a planning board that's focused on one project with an agenda that's focused on design. So I'm a little confused why we would need to agree on that, other than like we're basically agreeing to have a public meeting focused on one project.
I, I'm just, I'm just asking because it is different. It is different that us having a piece of paper and trying out designs versus just talking in words about them. That's a little different to me. Um, and, and something that we have not done before, but I think um, understanding Deepa's has some questions, but I.
No, it's like, I know being a designer, when you are vested in a design, it becomes your baby in some way, right? And we are at a point where we have to step away from that emotional connection to a design and make a bigger call. So I'm, I wasn't sure if that we will have that conflict down the line, right? We are going, I mean, it's a very great process to be collaborative. I, I absolutely have know this one, but being a designer myself, I totally know when you start to be vested in a design, it's really hard to step away from it at some point and make an non-emotional call on it. So I wasn't sure if that's going to be a clash at all, but I guess that's not how everybody's seeing it. So I'm not against the process, but it was just that designer in me is like, wait a minute, then I get attached to something. So that's what I was getting at.
Right, un- understood. Alright, so why don't we just look for a date? For something like this to happen. I'm assuming maybe it would be a Wednesday. I don't know if we need to look. What's the best way to find a date?
I'm pretty much out on um, Wednesdays. I'm pretty much out on Wednesdays.
You're out on Wednesdays?
Yeah.
How soon are we looking to, are we looking to make it for December? Or is there something for the next calendar?
I think so. I think we need to I mean, especially with, when we have two months coming up with limited meetings. I think it's a good time to to get that and get them working on something different than what they've been showing us, right? So um.
Say, you know, you'll late this month, early next month would be best, obviously.
So I think, Marcelo, I think you said Tuesdays aren't great for you. Wednesdays aren't great for Kate. Is that what you said, Marcelo, Tuesdays?
Yeah, Tu- Thursday, Tuesdays and Thursdays are a little, a little difficult for me. Uh, um, but I mean, I, I, I'll try to be flexible and I, I think it's important. Usually a, a, around five thirty, I can do it almost, almost every day.
Why don't we, why don't we look for a Monday? You know?
Yeah, whatever everybody's comfortable with.
And, yeah.
So really a five, uh, a Monday, a Monday, five thirty on is probably the best.
Yeah. And we're not looking at a three hour meeting. We're looking at an hour meeting. This is about massing and nothing else.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Only because I, only because some of us are working in Boston, et cetera, is my reference will be after six so that we have some time to commute and get back and be ready.
That's fine, I don't.
In the next three months, I have a couple of travel plans, so depending on the date, I may have to figure out a plan.
So Monday after six.
Alright, do you want to send out a doodle poll or you just, do we want to?
I don't know. I'll send out a doodle to poll, but I'll also send it over to, to, to Rich and, and I'll get his, his take on it and then I'll probably and from that point, maybe I'll send the doodle poll out regarding a couple, a couple Monday.
Okay, yep, sounds good. Okay, unless anyone sees anything on this list that we have to do that we haven't talked about the meeting minutes. It sucks. They should be in pretty good shape. I think they are in good shape. But you don't want to fall behind on these things, believe me.
No, I, I.
I've worked on that before and it was not fun.
I've gone through and, and every Tricia I know has already gone through, but please.
Did anyone have anything else on that list that I maybe skipped over that they really wanted to say something about? Okay. As now, when I get to this time of the night, I have a tendency to just plow through to get to the end. So unless someone stops me, I will just keep plowing through. But, okay, meeting minutes. Um, Peter, are you able to bring them up?
I had no changes to either, either stuff.
I, I didn't either because I went through them already.
I'm good as well.
Yeah, I have no objections.
Kate, do you want to look at either one of them? Or, or Kevin? I know you love meeting minutes, Kevin.
I, I scanned through them.
Okay.
Yeah, I gave him a quick, quick scan. I think I'm good.
Yeah, I thought, I thought they were in good shape. I know the, like I said, people are spending a lot of time on it before I even see them, so I really have very few edits and then they pop, you know, kind of polish it up and, and we're good, so.
I make a motion that we accept the go ahead, if Anna's got something.
Oh, no, please do. Go for it.
Um, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as submitted for October, I'm sorry, August twenty fifth and September eighth, twenty twenty two.
Well, talking about.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa, I'm gonna die.
Yeah, I'm just submitting to the I.
Marcelo, I.
Captain Jersey, I.
I'm a clean eye.
And Trisha Kendall, I. Alright. So, I think I think eleven oh nine, we will be signing out. Thank you, everyone. Another uh I don't know, packed, packed night, so. Thanks for your time.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, I guess we do. Thanks. You want to make it?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eleven ten, yeah.
Alright. Is there a second?
One second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa, I'm gonna die.
Yeah, I'm just submitting to the I.
So, I.
Captain Jersey, I.
Captain McLean, I.
And Trisha Kendall, I. We are so out of here. Alright.
Congratulations, Kevin. Get some sleep. We're gonna drive.
Not happen.
Alright, bye bye.
And thanks, Allison.
Thank you, Allison, yes. Bye, Tricia.
Bye.